All right, so we'll open the meeting. This is a meeting of the Rutland Zoning Board of Appeals. Present are Tamika Murphy, Secretary Chris Senical, Vice Chair Robert Paulson, Arthur Wells, Paul Corain, Jacob Morris, I have Rick Saret. So, we're going to take things slightly out of order. I realize that most of you are probably here for the cell tower. But, the petitioner, the attorney for the petitioner is not going to be available till 6:30. And, I realize it's very inconvenient, I apologize for that. But, so, we're, we don't really have much choice. I mean, I suppose, I suppose we could have told them no, but I elected to say it was okay. Now that you're all sitting here, I feel bad that I did that. But, so, let's, let's take up some other business first. So, Tamika, do you, do you want to do the, you want to do this in order, or electronic signatures?
However you want to.
All right.
It doesn't have to be better.
Do the minutes signature?
Yeah, you want to do the minutes first?
No.
All right, let's do the minutes. So, these are the minutes from September 8th. This was a fairly straightforward variance. I didn't have any issue that jumped out at me.
I didn't have any issues either.
No?
No.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as they are?
Second.
Okay, so, we'll, we'll do this as a row call. Paul?
Yes.
Yes, aye, yes, aye.
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 Okay, so unanimous? Accept those, okay, so, now, on, on the electronic signatures, we, we have this, this email that went out, this, this is from KP, right?
Yes.
Which is Town Council. And, it's kind of involved. I, I think that we should be doing it. I, I use electronic signatures in my outside business. And, but, I don't, I don't think we need to take up a lot of board time. I think what I'll do is I'll work with Tamika, and see if we can come up with just a way to implement it. And if we need to get together at a later meeting and talk about it, we'll, we'll do that.
It's a lot easier trying to sign those things in a timely fashion.
I, I do everything electronically.
Yeah, and it's just, it's very hard for me personally
Yeah.
to get back into town
Yes.
before they close, and I'm out before they open.
Right.
And, you know.
I, no, it's legitimate.
It's really hard, I think.
Yeah.
You know.
Okay.
Not about you guys, but, it's tough, you know, you've got to try to get home, you know, before.
Okay, so I'm going to make a note here to coordinate with Tamika. Establishing a revolving account pursuant to 53G and setting a spending limit. All right, so, the planning board, they take in fees, and, from people when they have a petition, or they, they want the planning board to act on something, they put it in their own bank account. When they have to hire an engineer, when they have to advertise, they, they spend that money. We don't have that. I know this is really boring probably for everybody, but, the money that we take in when somebody files a petition goes into the general fund in the town, and then we're budgeted so much money every year. And, what has happened is, we can't anticipate how many people are going to come for us in a year. And here it is November, and we were out of money. So, we had to ask the town to transfer money from a reserve account to, so we could pay our bills. So, what the town accountant and the town administrators have told us is that they want us to set up our own checking account, which, and we will act just like the planning board does. We can't do this for this fiscal year. This fiscal year ends at the end of, end of June, so as of July 1st, it's a new fiscal year. And apparently, this has to be voted on at the annual town meeting in May. So, so, we, so, now, do we, I'm assuming that we have to vote in favor of this at some point?
I would recommend not.
Yeah.
Just, yeah, to show your inspi-
Okay, so, do I hear a motion to establish a revolving account pursuant to 53G and setting a spending limit, subject to approval at the annual town meeting?
I think.
Move, yeah. Some move.
Can we have a discussion on this, or?
Uh, do we need to have discussion?
Well, I'm just curious about this.
Yes, yes, you do.
Yeah.
About the, setting the spending limit.
Yeah.
All right, we, we, so you're saying, you're suggesting that we have to set a spending limit tonight?
Dan, Dan says that the board has, the town accountant says the board has to establish what that spending limit is. He recommended $5,000.
$5,000?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a, that is, if I'm mistaken, please correct me, but the spending limit is how big of a check you can write. So, most of the checks, Tamika, what is the cost of, um?
Yeah.
Well, is that per check, or is that a yearly budget?
Usually, it's, yeah, it's, the spending limit's usually a per check, so that, the check would have to be signed and possibly countersigned. Rick and Tamika would have the ability to possibly write the check. Rick would have to countersign it, and then, but he would have a limit of X number of dollars that he could write the check for.
Okay, I, I just had a number in my head, 2,500, but if, does 5,000, Peter, I mean, do you have any thoughts on that?
On, excuse me, on the limit, none of it.
Does anybody know, do you know what the, yeah, planning board is?
Uh, 7,500?
Yeah, I think it's right around there.
They also have much larger application fees.
Yes.
I believe they have larger application fees, and they go through more than-
We do.
Right, well, I mean, 5,000 seems extremely adequate to me, for what we do.
I think, yeah, I don't think there'll be a problem, yeah.
All right.
I mean, you could have somebody come in, where you've got to bring an engineer in for something, we've done that before.
Yeah.
You know, this might be something that we do, you know, so.
Yeah.
Those guys, yeah, so those guys can rack up a-
That's, that's, the board would probably have to, oh, when you go above the spending limit, the board has to approve it, Rick can't just say yes. That's typically the way I work.
I mean, usually, usually we can just try to mitigate that by just making sure the guy bills you. If it's an engineer we're bringing in for a third party review, just don't bill us over five grand.
Yeah.
You know, in increments of like, two or three grand, so we can just kind of keep the money flowing for you, you know?
Yeah, I mean, just, just based on the past, let's say, five years, I mean, we haven't even touched 5,000, so.
Yeah.
So, I, I would say that'd be more than adequate.
I think so.
Okay, so, do we need any more discussion on this?
Mr. Chair, if I may. Mass General law is very specific about the, a specific chapter and section defines which boards can spend from it. So, 53, 53G is planning board. You have to have one based on Chapter 44, Section 53E, and one half.
All right, where, where is the-
Which is ridiculous, if I'm not familiar.
Are you saying, so if I pull my cellphone out, and I look up 53G, it'll say plant, it'll say zoning board?
Planning board.
Planning board, yes.
Plan, or, well, planning, you say planning board was 53G?
That's what you're saying.
That's what I believe in.
And we're something-
The one you were referencing was 53G.
And we're E.
You need, you need 53E and a half, which is a generic spending account, not specific to any other board. So, Concom has its own, Planning has its own. You need to be in that, otherwise, there's a whole other set of bylaw problems.
I will trust your judgment on that. I will look it up after, just out of curi-
Deal great.
Just out of curiosity, but, but, I, but, I mean, obviously, you've got it in front-
Whatever it is.
Oh, 53E and 3/4 is a completely different kind of account.
Okay, so you're saying it's 53E and a half?
E and one half, yes.
Yeah, we're, we're the only state in the Union, by the way, that uses half, and a half.
States with too many laws, everybody knows that.
But, that's okay.
And too many ways to revise it, because they do all kinds of, their numbering system is not consistent.
All right, so, all right, so, all right, you learned something new, I wasn't aware of that. All right, so, we'll entertain a motion to establish a-
His motion's, yeah, his motion's there, right?
Yeah, revolving account for 53E and a half.
Okay, for $5,000.
$5,000 limit.
I'll second that.
Okay, so, all in favor? Paul? Aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, thank you. And, reviewing the proposed fee schedule. Now, we, we've got the proposed fee schedule done by the town planner. And-
Get sent out?
I don't know if I-
I didn't get it.
All right, did, uh, first, I mean, I saw it, and I don't have it, so I, I'll tell you what. Why, why don't I disseminate it to everybody? And, I just, just got it like, yesterday, and I thought I had done it, but I apparently didn't. I'll disseminate it, and we'll, we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting. I, I will tell you that, that when the finance committee allowed the transfer of the funds, they, they asked me to get it done by January 1st. So, I, I think we can, we can do it, yeah. Okay, great.
Um, I, yeah, I want a little time just to research what other towns do.
Yeah.
But I'd like to see what, what David had brought up.
Yeah, I, I, sorry that I didn't have it for tonight, but, he, he didn't say, this is what you should do. He just gave an overview and a range of, of everything.
Do we know what the average cost of a, since we're already paying for these things out of the budget now, out of our own checking account, what the average cost of a meeting is?
Yeah, so a legal ad is $168 to please that. And then, there's my time, which varies, and then the postage. That's involved with sending postage for via butter letters.
Which is anywhere from $10.
Say, let's say 53 cents times 30. Usually, it's like 30.
Call it $20 at a high end.
Yes, yep.
$180.
So, $168 postage plus your time?
Correct, yep.
So, say, what, it's a, call it 300 bucks.
Yeah, yeah, David actually had some good thoughts, but, but we'll, I'll disseminate that.
A general meeting, general permit costs approximately $300.
Okay.
What are the, what are the fees now? I don't even know what the fees are.
A variance application is $150, so it, it doesn't cover it. A special permit fee is 225.
No, the, the planning boards are like, 500, aren't they?
Oh, yeah, yep.
So, yes, we need to be at least $300 for a fee, just to cover costs.
Yeah, there's, there was a differentiation between residential and commercial, so, but, but-
Which I think there should be, because, you know, someone coming in for a shed, and they're back yards, man.
Right, right.
Don't need to pay, what, like, this special permit tonight, there's only 225.
Right.
But someone for a little home occupation, with the planning board's going to pay 500 dollars.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a, it's a 15-minute meeting versus a 3-hour meeting.
Right.
Yeah, you know, it's a, it's a whole different deal.
Right. All right, so, Tamika, that, the attorney
Yes.
that you were dealing with, did, did he think that 6:30 was going to work for him?
He, he thought it might actually be sooner than that. I am watching, he's not on quite yet, though.
All right, he'll, will he be on this screen?
Yes, he's going to join us via Zoom.
And, okay.
And there are going to be some other representatives as well.
Yes.
I'm not certain-
All Zoom, all Zoomed?
All Zoom, and I'm not certain if those folks are on, because there's so many different names.
Okay.
So, if any of them are on and want to begin speaking to the matter, that's acceptable too. It doesn't have to be just Attorney Klasnick, he just said he was going to be running late.
That's why we go ahead and see if there's anybody there, and get this thing rolling.
All right, can, can you make an inquiry?
Yeah, let me just, wait, you know, because he sent me the names of his folks who would be joining.
All right, so, just, just maybe a couple housekeeping matters. So, we'd ask that you silence your cellphones. We're, we're going to, the way this usually works is, we let the petitioner, these telecommunications people, tell us what their proposal is. And then, we, and then the board will, might have some questions for them. And, I, I know I have a couple questions, and, and I know Chris has probably several more questions. But, I realize you're all here, and you want your voices to be heard, and that, and that's fine, we'll do that. Of course, I, I would ask that it be done in an orderly manner, that all communications come through the chair, so we don't have three and four conversations going on all at the same time.
So, Rick, we have, Martin Lavin is on, Frank Kelly is on, and Attorney Klasnick is joining right now, actually.
Excellent, very good.
If we could voice that, I mean, I, I would like to go through this, I mean, I've got a lot of comments and just questions
Sure.
through his application, so I don't know if he's planning on going through his application, just kind of phase by phase. That might kind of just answer a lot of my questions anyways, if he just, but, we'll just let him give his thing and go from there, and
Yeah.
Chris Van Haye, he has a PowerPoint presentation that he plans to share with everybody.
Oh, great, beautiful, perfect.
All right, all right, so I, can these people hear us now?
Yeah, yep, every, they can hear everything that is going on.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yep, Attorney Klasnick's up there.
All right, so, the next matter on the agenda, application for variance and application for special permit, Blue Sky Towers LLC, seeking relief from height requirements to construct 140-foot telecommunications tower at 12 Phillips Road, and also seeking a special permit as required by our bylaws. So, I understand you have a presentation? Attorney Klasnick?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chair Member of the Boards, Dan Klasnick. I, I guess initially, I just wanted to confirm that, you know, we have a full five-member board this evening?
We do, yeah.
Okay. And, yes, and if I may be permitted, I'll share my screen. I put together a PowerPoint that I hope will help us walk through the project, and provide a good background for everyone of interest, the board, and whomever else.
Are you trying to, Peter?
Yeah.
Dan, I enabled the screen sharing, so let me know if it doesn't work.
Okay, thank you.
Ooh, that might be too much. Excuse me, he's the attorney for what?
It's from the petition.
I'll adjust it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so hopefully everyone can see my screen now.
Yes, we can.
Turn it up, turn up the volume.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Turn it in the back.
Can you guys hear back there?
He's got to talk before we can give you a different advantage.
Peter just turned it up a second ago, so it should be louder.
Yeah, let's try it now.
Attorney, can you talk, just so we can get a sound?
Yes, good evening, Dan Klasnick for, for Blue Sky Towers.
Turn the lights.
Can you guys hear that all right? You good back there?
Use it, be-
Okay, Dan?
How about the light?
All right, you want to just, would you mind shutting the lights off back there, sir?
Thank you, Attorney Klasnick, can you try the volume again?
Yes, good evening, Dan Klasnick, Attorney for Blue Sky Towers.
Somewhere in between those.
Okay, all right.
Give it a go, bud.
You're good.
Okay.
Testing, testing.
One second, good evening. Can everyone hear me sufficiently?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. So, I guess I just wanted to start first by introducing myself, which I've already done, and, and expressing my client and AT&amp;T's appreciation for the opportunity to, to review with the board the proposal to install and operate a wireless telecommunications tower facility on 12 Phillips Road with access over portions of 285 Main Street. Also attending this evening are Tom Johnson, Tom is the engineer, he designed, or he prepared the necessary drawings, and has reviewed the design of the facility. Martin, he's, he's AT&amp;T's RF engineer, he provided the report that was with, with this, and also was, you know, essential as far as looking at the alternative site analysis. And Frank Kelly, he is the site acquisition manager for, for AT&amp;T. Although I'm sure this board, and perhaps members of the audience, are very familiar with the, with the property in question, I just wanted to, and I think it's always helpful, to provide just a little bit of background. 12 Phillips Road is a relatively, you know, large parcel consisting of some residential structures towards the area right off of Phillips Road, and then, really, the majority of, of the property itself is wooded and undeveloped land. The, the property at 285 Main Street is, is the town property that, you know, consists of, or has the elementary school and the middle school contained on it. And, and what Blue Sky is proposing to do, and has undertaken to do, is, is lease a 100-foot by 100-foot square foot area on 12 Phillips Road, as I said, with, with access and proposed utilities over 285 Main Street. The, as we will see, when I look at the plans, the proposal really is to locate the telecommunications tower facility towards, towards the rear of, of the lot, and also, you know, in an area, as I had said, that's, that's heavily wooded. In reviewing your bylaws and in discussions with your town representatives, we are requesting a variance relief. The, the specified height limitations, as, as I've interpreted them under your bylaw, would, would really limit tower height to 45 feet, in one interpretation, or perhaps only 35 feet, in, in another interpretation. So, as we, as we really outlined in the materials that we provided in the brief, there are, there are unique topographical circumstances that, you know, directly affect the ability to, to install a telecommunications tower without the requested dimensional variance. I mean, it's really a, a practical impossibility to install a 35 or 45-foot telecommunications tower at this, at this location and provide the requisite service. So, it is, is a central aspect of the facility, is of course, height, it's a line of sight technology, and without, without that requested relief, Blue Sky would not be able to, to make use of, of that lot for the installation, and the, the significant gap in both coverage and capacity that AT&amp;T is undertaking to address would not be satisfied. This would really result in a substantial hardship, and also, the, as this board, I'm sure is familiar, the Telecommunications Act recognizes prohibition of service and the requirements to provide service as, as really another unique circumstance under which a variance is, is required. In, in addition to the variance, we filed an application for a special permit. Under your bylaws, this use is allowed to be located on the property at 12 Phillips Road, and we include with requested waivers, so it is fundamentally something that is, is permitted. The proposed telecommunications facility will comply with each, each of the bylaw standards as it relates to the special permit criteria, with the exception, of course, of the height standards. It's, in compliance with your bylaw, the, the proposed installation is, is a monopole. It, it provides for co-location, it satisfies the property line setback standards from, and, and is also located on a large, as I had said, parcel that is substantially wooded and, and setback from surrounding residences. So, really, the essence of your bylaw, as I interpreted it, was that those were the primary criteria that you were looking at to ensure that, that the facility, you know, was in compliance and justified and met the standards for a special permit. As, as I had indicated, and as I'm sure this board is aware, the federal government, through the Telecommunications Act, while maintaining certain rights to local municipal boards to regulate the zoning aspects of telecommunications towers, they've, they've imposed five criteria, really, that preempt local zoning to the extent that it would not be possible to, to comply. So, as, as I've listed here, there, and I think that is particularly pertinent here is, is shall not prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting provision of personal wireless service. Also, I, I think it's important to note, as far as the environmental effects of, of radio emissions, that's something that's within the exclusive jurisdiction of the FCC. And, also, the other criteria, you know, a reasonable period of time, and the FCC has defined that specifically through the use of shot clocks that preempt state law requirements as far as the timing for a board to, to issue its decision. Before coming to this, to this board with this proposal, both, both AT&amp;T and, and Blue Sky have spent a great deal of time, really years, working towards this particular evening where they're presenting this proposal to you. So, this is something where they've extensively canvassed the area, looking for first existing structures. Having found no existing structures, and where we're proposing 140-foot monopole, it's, I think, pretty apparent that AT&amp;T's requirements, 136 feet, would, would not be met by any, any existing structures that would be located in this particular area. So, having failed to, to, to find something as far as an existing structure, then they, Blue Sky would undertake to review and canvas properties in the area that would allow for the placement of a wireless facility potentially to, to address AT&amp;T's service requirements. And, a lot of the properties in this particular area are smaller, and much smaller certainly than 12 Phillips Road, and, you know, don't really have the wooded area, the setbacks, and other requirements that are specified in your bylaws. So, a, a large number of parcels were eliminated, but we did include a, a specific alternative site assessment, where Blue Sky and AT&amp;T both looked at, you know, 11 additional properties that, from physical characteristics, could potentially allow for the sighting of, of a, of a wireless facility. But, based upon RF requirements, really, none of those were suitable alternatives to the, to the proposal before you. So, I guess I just did want to emphasize that a lot of work has gone on to get to this point, and we certainly are mindful of, of doing that necessary due diligence. So, the specific proposal before you this evening is for a, and, as pertains to the dimensional variance and special permit, is for the installation of a 140-foot tall monopole tower at 12 Phillips Road. The, the tower will accommodate not only AT&amp;T's equipment, but also three additional wireless service providers. The installation will include ground space that's enclosed by fencing with access from Main Street over the existing scold paved drive to the way proposed gravel driveway. Electric and telephone services are the only utilities necessary for the facility. We'll utilize the existing overhead service along the scold drive, and then underground to the, to the fenced-in area. We, we feel like we provided really detailed an application and outlined our satisfactions and standards for, you know, the variance and the special permit. So, those are really the essential components of the facility itself. The AT&amp;T installation is, they're proposing to install on the tower at 136-foot centerline, six antennas. Within the fenced area, they'll install their equipment cabinet, which will be located on a concrete pad for system reliability in emergency situations where the power is disrupted. There was also proposed a propane-powered backup generator with a separate propane tank. And as I think we illustrated, and I'll talk about a little later in this presentation, ATT, I think, has shown that there is a need for a facility in this area at the designated height, really, to, to address its significant gap in, in AT&amp;T's network. This is one of the sheets that was included with the plan set that was filed with the application, and, you know, it illustrates an erno view of the property. Blue Sky has undertaken to have all the wetlands on the property delineated, and has been working with the Conservation Commission in that regard. So, I think it does provide us with some background perspective of, you know, where the proposed tower will be located, which is right here. And then we see, you know, based upon the limitations of the Water Resource Protection District, also the wetlands, what- What, you know, Blue Sky has really tried to do is select a location that is not only setback significantly from other residences, but also avoids any impact on the wetlands and the other resource areas. So, and as I said, there's significant screening of trees between the facility and any of the residences in the area. I included this plan sheet just because there was so much information on the other sheet. Once again, this just illustrates an overall site plan view of the location with the fenced area, the access as proposed over the scold drive, then a new cut here into the proposed fenced area. I think it further illustrates, you know, clearly without all that other information, that the facility will be setback significantly from all property lines this way and this way where the residences are located. And after construction is complete, I think it's important to realize and understand that there really will only be perhaps one, maybe two visits a month to the site itself just for ordinary maintenance. So, this isn't obviously a use that's going to in any way impact traffic or create traffic at this particular location. This is a close-up view of the driveway. It shows once again, let me see if I can do this. So, here's the existing service, and the proposal is to take it overhead to a new pole and then underground up to a transformer that would be set by the service utility company. There'll be a meter bank installed inside. There is proposed to be a transition from the paved service to a paved surface and then to the 12-foot-wide gravel driveway with a turnaround area. It shows you the gate. There's also proposed to be a locked swing gate that will be located here directly across so that only authorized access will be possible via vehicle down that area. And this just shows you the grading, which is very minor. It will be just very minimal disruption. Tree clearing will, of course, be necessary to create the necessary space, but it's fairly And so, this is a close-up view of the equipment compound area itself. Proposed area, as I think I had said, is 3,600 square feet, 60 by 60. It's going to be surrounded by a 6-foot-high chain link fence with barbed wire. There'll be a 12-foot-wide double swing gate, locked swing gate. The proposed space will accommodate the telecommunications tower location, the space for the AT&amp;T equipment, and then there will be space available for three future co-locators at the tower. So, this is creating a multi-carrier solution that will allow for future carriers to just bring their equipment in, install it, and then place their antennas on there. As I'd said, what's being proposed is 140-foot monopole that will accommodate AT&amp;T's equipment with a centerline height of 136 feet. They'll install a triangular mount, six antennas. This provides for the necessary 360 degrees of coverage, and the cabling runs down inside of the monopole through a cable tray and then to AT&amp;T's equipment. Following publication and a better notice, locations were selected and a balloon test was conducted on two separate days, and this is really to try and assess the tower's visibility. These were conducted in coordination with the board and the town and the selected locations on August 17th and August 21st from 9:00 to 1:00. And during the balloon test, the likely visibility of the proposed tower really is assessed in a set of photo simulations, and photographs were taken, and this included driving an area, which we will see in a minute from the photo location map. Let me just move down there. So, this is the photo log that was included with the photo simulation packet, and basically the yellow circle represents a 1-mile radius. The blue lines represent the areas that the vendor drove in assessing the visibility of the balloon from those locations. So, I just did want to highlight initially that of all these locations that are, I think, very comprehensive, it was really only found to be visible from, or partially visible from, a limited four locations. Now, what I've included here is the first photo simulation in the packet. This is really from the scold access drive. It's a little hard to see. This is one of the partial visibility locations, so the balloon is sort of here, and then you can just see perhaps the corner of one of AT&amp;T's rays peeking through. This is the second location, once again, taken from the scold access drive. If you look at your photo location map, if you have one, it's like, it's looking back towards Main Street, basically. On the left, we show the balloon, and then on the right, the representation of the telecommunications This is the third location, and it's taken from Forest Hill Drive. The balloon is through the trees here, and then the tower representation or 3D modeling depiction is located on the right side. So, once again, that's just a partial view. These are two locations for Maple Avenue and Fairview Avenue, where the balloon was found not to be visible during the course of the assessment. And this is the final view, once again, from the scold access drive this way. Looking in the other direction, once again, we see the balloon on the left and the tower on the right, or the representation of the tower on the right. So, I did include the other photo simulations in here, I mean, the other photographs in here, just to, I think it's helpful to show not only where the tower is visible from, but where it was determined that the balloon was not visible. So, I've included, you know, just in four, because there are 35 of these. So, just so everyone sees, we have, you know, views from out, throughout the area, Maple Avenue, Kenwood Drive, Main Street. So, there was no visibility of the tower. Once again, some other views from Main Street. No visibility of the balloon from those particular perspectives. Once again, all around the area, and no visibility detected of the balloon. Kenwood Drive again, I guess it's Priority, Prowdy Lane, Main Street, Kenwood Drive. Really, no visibility was realized when they did this really comprehensive review. Jupiter Lane, Briarwood Road. Once again, Maple Main. We tried to touch upon all the spots, and actually, I think the board also provided us with some locations, so this really, I think, is comprehensive. And then also from various locations, once again. And then this was the final view, Pleasantville Road, which I think is actually down here. And once again, I just included, once, the copy of the photo log, just once again, to emphasize the comprehensive nature of what was undertaken to try and, you know, provide an accurate representation of visibility. In support of the application, AT&amp;T provided coverage maps and really a detailed RF report. What AT&amp;T has certified, they currently have, you know, coverage and capacity gaps along Main Street, Maple Avenue, Highway 56, and really this whole surrounding area. So, and what the RF report certifies is that the proposed facility, you know, on that telecommunications tower at the 136-foot height is what's essential for AT&amp;T to address its coverage and capacity requirements and meet its network needs. With that report, AT&amp;T included coverage maps. These are a common tool. It's a computer-generated tool that uses various factors, height, topography, and other location factors, to assess the amount of, and it's depicted graphically, the amount of service based upon the threshold levels that are specified that they anticipate will be realized. So, these locations in black represent, the black stars represent existing sites that AT&amp;T currently operates, and this is the location, the proposed one at Phillips Road, and you can see that there is significant lack of coverage throughout this entire area. There's no 4G LTE coverage anywhere within that scope. But then, if you look at the representation after this site is installed and operational at 136 feet, you can see the increased amount of service, the ability to actually connect with those other locations, hopefully, so that folks don't encounter lost signal, download speeds, and other factors that impact a facility when there isn't, facilities close enough in proximity with sufficient strength to provide the necessary service. This shows you, once again, the black stars representing AT&amp;T's existing facilities and the distance from those facilities, and you can see, because of the distance, those locations, because of power levels, topography, features, and other factors, they don't have the ability for their signal to propagate in and provide the necessary service here. So, they have all these operational facilities, and this is another essential aspect and requirement for their network. As I indicated at the beginning of my presentation, and I think this board is familiar, the FCC really has exclusive jurisdiction over the emissions levels and the maximum permissible exposure, but what we did is we included a report that certified that this facility would be in full compliance with the adopted FCC and mass public health standards for the operation of these facilities. And what these shows graphically, on the left, is the calculated permissible levels from just the AT&amp;T operation, with 100% being the allowable level. So, what this is showing you that, and this is really a worst-case scenario, it assumes that there is a flat plain, that the antennas are operating at maximum power, all things that aren't, well, aren't actually what's going to be occurring, it would only be at that 2.41%. And then, in addition to looking at it, we looked at if this were a four-carrier, with all four carriers operating at the same time, and once again, you see, it's only at 3.65% of the allowable 100% level. So, it's truly de minimis as far as compliance with the FCC-adopted standards. We also included an environmental sound assessment with the application. This included taking actual ambient measurements for noise in the area, and, you know, and through evaluation of the area and surrounding area and the project details, and looking really at vendor specifications and actual empirical data from other locations. The report concluded that the facility operation, which, as I had mentioned, includes an emergency backup generator, so that's only something that operates in case of power disruption other than a short period of time for testing, would be fully in compliance with the Rutland bylaw standards for noise in the property line. So, once again, just to recap, what I think Blue Sky and AT&amp;T have tried to do is present a responsible proposal to the board. These facilities are a necessary part of the infrastructure, and everyone relies upon their wireless device, or almost everyone relies upon their wireless device, so we need to have these facilities positioned and placed in such a way to ensure that the service is available. As I noted in the application and then outlined in this presentation, AT&amp;T has a significant gap. We did look at multiple alternative sites, and this was really found to be the only one suitable, and also, you know, it does provide for co-location. There will be not only AT&amp;T, but three other wireless service providers can potentially use this. So, I think it is, it really is good for the community, and we hopefully will be able to gain your support, and at this point, you know, we're available to try and address any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Klaasnik. All right, can we hit the light switch again, please?
Do you want me to stop sharing, or do you want me to leave this up in case...
You don't need to leave it up. I don't think you need to...
Okay, I'm gonna stop sharing then.
All right. Okay, so, we'll hear from members of the board. Why don't we start with Chris?
Well, I got a lot of stuff. I don't know if you want to go over everybody else.
Well, Chris, why don't you go ahead?
It might cover some of ours.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
I didn't really put things in order here, but let me see.
Hopefully, they answered some of your questions. I guess some of mine.
No, I mean, I, you know, so, just want to make the board aware that they're asking for a variance in the height. Okay, so, there's two things going on here, right? We've got the site plan, you know, special permit review, and then the height. So, that's, the height's something we're gonna have to talk about, because it's a lot higher, about 100 feet higher than what would normally be allowed in that area. So, that's one thing we'll be up for discussion. On the plans, when I looked at the plans, I just, one thing that, on drawing, the drawing with the wetlands buffer, the scale is not correct. Dan, I don't know if the engineer's on thing here, but drawing A1, this was that, just so everybody knows, this is that drawing, the first drawing you showed. The buffer, when you, the scale is 1 inch equals 320 feet, and your buffer, which isn't labeled properly, the green line is the 100-foot buffer, correct?
Yes.
All right, so you're showing the blue line as the 100-foot buffer, which is the, actually, the edge of the wetlands. But that green line, if that is the 100-foot buffer zone, that's only 80 feet on this plan, when I measure it out. It's a quarter of an inch.
If I may.
A quarter of an inch on the 1-inch scale, 320 is 80 feet, right? And I checked it at a lot of different places. So, that's something, I don't know, I just wanted to bring that up, because that one corner gets close, and I know you've already walked this with the Conservation Commission, you know, regarding this plan, and I just want to make sure the, if this scale was in fact wrong, I mean, that could be wrong, but if that scale is in fact not correct or accurate, I just think the Conservation Commission should know about that, because now that wetland buffer is closer to, and there's that one edge of the 60 by 60 zone or the 100 by zone, whatever you've got on there. So, that's gonna get pretty close to that edge of that yellow-shaped fenced-in area it shows.
Chris, is this a good time to just bring up the letter we received?
Sure.
All right, from the Conservation Commission Administrator, who happens to be Christopher Murphy, dated November 3rd. So, it said they conducted a site walk with Christopher Lucas from Lucas Engineering. Site walk was discussed, all members were in agreement. The work will take place outside the 100-foot buffer zone. Now, Chris, are you questioning that, that fact?
Yeah, I'm questioning the fact on this plan that they provided, that on my scale, that buffer zone only measures out to 80 feet, and it's a hun, we all know it's a 100-foot buffer zone.
Yeah.
So, I just wanted to bring that up. And again, I'm not saying anything, you know, it could be my scale, I mean, I printed out the 11 by 17s, and hopefully, I printed them out, you know, because you've got the two scales on there.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes. Go ahead.
Tom Johnson, he's the project engineer I introduced. Would it be helpful for him just to explain that point?
Yeah, I think so. Go right ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, hi, good evening. This is Tom Johnson. I'm the engineer with Proterra Design Group. My firm is the company that prepared the plans. I think it might be a printing and a printing issue here. That green line does represent 100-foot buffer from the... from the regulated wetland line. The wetland line has been surveyed in, and all the work will be taking place outside of that, that zone. So we've, we viewed it with the Conservation Commission, like, like mentioned, we walked it with them. It's also been walked by D E P. And as part of it, as part of this process, we expect to have to file an RDA with them to confirm that line. But sometimes when you print 11 by 17, it's a little tricky to print everything to scale. This has got two scales on it. One is for a full size, and one is for a half size.
I'll try it on, I'll try it on the full size. I'll check that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Chris.
One question regarding the reason for having the tower where you're, where you're showing it. Was there any, and I'm not sure if this, Chief, you may, you may remember this, but with the fire station tower, is that suitable for any other telecommunications? Or was that strictly just for the fire department?
This one that's there now is, I believe, just for emergency communications.
And is there, is there another one in the church steeple?
Yes.
Yes.
There is, right? Is that still there?
Yes.
That's still active? So did, did, did you guys ever look at using that existing tower in the, in the church steeple in the center of town?
Yeah, if, if I, if I may. And, once again, there are individuals directly from AT&amp;T. But let me, let me just try and address that, if I may. Just bringing back my notes here. So just to clarify, we included in our RF report, for AT&amp;T included in their RF report, not only the coverage maps that I showed, but also maps as it relates to the, the church steeple, which I guess is the one at 264 Main Street, is what we're talking about, I presume. And currently, currently AT&amp;T is installed within that steeple. But it's only capable of supporting 3G technology. So what we're showing you and what we're talking about this evening really is upgrade to, to the service to 4G LTE. And really due to the, the physical limitations and the equipment requirements, it's not possible to, to modify that existing facility to accommodate, to accommodate the necessary 4G equipment. And also, I mean, I guess I would just emphasize, and we're talking about AT&amp;T installing their antennas at 136 feet. Currently, I think they're at about 70 feet in that, in that steeple. So what they're really saying to, to the board this evening is that in order to provide the service that they need to satisfy the network requirements and to implement this LTE 4G service, they need to be at that 136-foot height. So I hope that helps clarify. There, there isn't any possibility of using that church steeple because they're already using it, and they're before you this evening because it's not suitable.
Well, under your Exhibit 5, which is required by our bylaws to review all the other alternative sites, you don't address that in that exhibit. So that was the reason for the questioning. I mean, I, I'm not an RF engineer, and I, and I take what you say for, for gospel or to be true. And we can have a third party review these comments and things like that if we so choose. But I really feel that that should have been much more clarified in that Exhibit 5 analysis. You don't reference any of that existing, using that existing tower there, or why you couldn't. So that's, that was my question there. Okay.
What was the problem with the fire station tower?
I think that's strictly for the fire department, just emergency equipment, that can't be.
Yeah.
I, I remember, I, I want to say when we had that, that hearing, that was, I wasn't sure if that was the way that went, Chief. Just, just, it wasn't for telecommunications.
Yeah, but Chris, we turned that one over to the planning board. Remember how it started with us? They get the dust and we kicked it back.
Also, in our, in our bylaws, there's a, and I just want to kind of close the loop on this. You guys may know this, and maybe some of the, some of the people here. Something, you can't have it within 300 feet of a scenic vista, a scenic landscape, or a scenic road. In the application, you, you addressed that, but you don't really say whether it, there was any, any of those areas within that 300-foot radius. Do you, do you guys have any information on if there are any scenic vistas, scenic landscapes, or scenic roads within the 300-foot radius of that tower?
Yes, I mean, as I, as I stated in our, in our application, you know, it's my understanding that that isn't the case, that there are none. And I think that's something that we reviewed at the pre-application meeting and also discussed with the town planner as well. So I'm, I, my understanding is that's, that's a correct statement.
Yeah, your, your, your answer was the location of the proposed wireless facility is a remote area that is buffered by vegetation and will not impact any scenic landscapes or vistas. So, but it just doesn't say if it's within that or not. So I was just curious if you know if there are any within that.
Yeah, my understanding is that, that's, there isn't.
One, one thing, just a, a minor thing, and I hope you can accommodate this. When you look on drawing, P2, uh, P1, sir, P1. One concern I got, this is regarding the gravel access road. I like that you've got like that, that paved asphalted area approximately 12 to 15, 18 feet coming off of the right-of-way, which is really good. It'll just make the road hold up well. But the pitch, I mean, everything's pitching towards the street, towards that right-of-way. And I was just wondering if there's a way that in that asphalt berm, so to speak, that, that connector, that you could just haunch that so that everything pitches back away from the road, so that gravel and stuff don't come out into the roadway upon a heavy rainstorm or anything like that? Is that possible to do, make that change? You know, you get the driveway profile there on Detail 2, P1?
Yes, yes, thank you. Tom?
Yep, Tom Johnson again. If you, if you scroll in or zoom in on that driveway profile on the left-hand side of that, right where the driveway starts, right at that 0 plus 00 station, we actually do have it going down. There's a negative sign there, so negative 2%. And then it, then it comes back up. So our, our intent is to slope away for a short period and then rise back up, and, and just for the reasons you're stating there.
So you're saying that's the way it is existing right now in this plan?
Yeah, if you look down on the profile sheet.
I'm looking at the profile. At the edge of the road, you're 138.8. And then it goes up from there.
Uh, it goes down to 138.34. So it, it does slope down slightly. And then it comes back up. And then by the time we get, it starts at negative 2%, and then it rises up at a 3%. So there's a small, we've got a small dip graded in there.
Yeah, that's only about a, what, about a half an inch dip?
That's at the start and the edge of the curve. So we don't have an elevation at the bottom of that curve. But the intent is to slope it away from the drive for, for a short period.
Yeah, I would, I would really, I would, I would really prefer that be inverted, actually, and be just a haunch there rather than an, rather than a puddle. And it just keeps it dry. It keeps, to keep, keeps all the dirt away from coming onto the roadway. Just so that's not a problem with the DB level.
Yeah, if you look at that, and, and we could certainly accommodate that. If you look at that 139 contour on the plan view, we've also got it graded so that it has a, a cross pitch on the road.
Yeah, I mean, the, the existing grade.
The intent would be to be dipped, but also pitched across the driveway. So to avoid any puddling, but also give a low point so that we don't get any run onto the road itself. But that could be accomplished with a, with a haunch, like you say, as well.
Yeah, just with the asphalt, because you know that road, I mean, I know you get the, the high point in the middle, and it, and the topography there does kind of fade off on a 45 across the road. But you know how those roads go over years, you know what I mean? It's, it's never, that grade's not gonna stay there. You and I both know that.
Sure, we could, we could work that into grading if, if.
Yeah, if you could, that'd be very, very helpful just to protect the roadway. Also, I want to make the board aware of the waivers that they're asking for in their application. On page 27, you guys aware of the waivers they're asking for?
Which ones? For stuff up with Chris, what page?
Um, well, if you go to page 26 in their application, they got a, they got a bunch of waivers here that they're asking for. And, and I don't know, Dan, if you want to comment on any of these particular waivers that you're asking for.
Yes, would you like me to now, or?
Sure, yeah. Why don't you, rather, just, you know, hear it from you, the board, and everybody can hear it from you.
We had included a request for waiver from Section 60A. Your bylaw includes a requirement for RF measurements within 90 days of operation and annually thereafter. And as I had noted to you at the beginning during my presentation, we included a detailed RF emissions exposure analysis. And in that, the exposure levels were only 2.41% with just AT&amp;T and 3.65% with, with the all four wireless service providers. So, and as I said, this is a worst-case scenario with all equipment operating at 100% capacity with no, no loss for any features. So in regards to, to imposing that requirement, the actual field measurements that anyone would provide you with would be lower than that, and so below the FCC standards as to, you know, seemingly to me not warrant requiring that. It's, it's Section 60B, you similarly require something for sound measurements. And once again, we included an environmental sound assessment where we certify based upon the operational aspects of the equipment, the distance from the property lines, that it will be fully compliant with, with all of your bylaw standards. And then I, the last one that I have in my notes, and someone correct me if I'm wrong, is your bylaw includes a term for the special permit of five years. And, you know, I understand that initially when telecommunications towers were something new, that there was a desire perhaps to have a look at these within five years. But I think, given the last 40 or whatever years that we've been deploying these facilities, whether there is really any value in having someone come back and, you know, basically reapply for the special permit given the long track record and reliability of these facilities. So those were the, the three specific waivers that, that I have included in the application.
Yeah, and I agree with that, Dan. Thank you very much for explaining that in great detail. Thank you. Um, so the board did, just so you know, so in our bylaw, we have a 90-day, and then a yearly testing of the RF and the sound. Now, the sound, I mean, just, just to make you aware of the equipment that's on that pad, right? They have the walk-in, they call the walk-in cooler, right? It's like an little eight-by-eight unit. It's got the air conditioner, it makes noise like an air conditioner. And then you got an emergency generator there, small little one, a little bit bigger than you have like in some of your homes, you know? You might have a couple of those. But, so the DB level on those things, you know, our bylaw is 50 dB at the property line, okay? You know, regular generator like that's gonna, within five, 10 feet is gonna be up around 80 dB, you know, almost like a lawnmower, you know? There is sound attenuation that they can put on those to really quiet them down, like hospitals have that, you know?
Oh, yeah, right.
Patients getting whacked up. So I just wanted to kind of review that with the board. Those are those two, and then also that five-year renewal, special permit renewal. So they're requesting waivers for those, and I don't know what anybody feels like. I mean, honestly, with the sound, I mean, the one thing with the sound, I mean, as they add carriers here, and, and they get up to that four, maximum four that they show, I, I don't know. The planning board are gonna hear those other three, right? So you modify these, like, we don't, we don't hear that. We just hear the tower. We're, we're, you know, think of us as just the, allowing the, the variance within the zoning, right? That's where the zoning Board of Appeals. But when it comes to adding those other three carriers and doing correlation, that's gonna be heard by the planning board. So I just, you know, in our bylaws, they're supposed to give us all this DB sound and all the RF for that place fully fitted out. And they don't, some of the things I saw, they don't really give you all of that. I mean, his, his graph right there, he did show you the difference between 3 and 3.65 and the RF. Some of the DB levels really weren't, it was just based off one generator. You know, does it get louder with three other ones there? I don't know. Will they all run at the same time? Only on emergency situation? And then at that point, I don't know, everybody in their town's running on a generator, so it doesn't really matter. So I, just, just a point I want to bring up to the board.
Let me ask you this.
Yep.
Between the sound and the RF, to you, which one is a bigger concern? Like, is the sound more likely to be something? You know, is RF, it looks so small.
Yeah.
Do we need to monitor that annually?
You know, honestly, that's a great question for someone who, I, I'm not qualified to answer, does RF change over the years? I, I don't know that.
I did a little research on that RF stuff. And the cell towers are way, way, way under.
I mean, he showed you it's 3, 3.6 to an 100.
FCC sets, that in general, these things are so, so low that RF is not an issue.
It's not what it looked like to me.
Yeah, the sound, though, that can, that can change over time. You know, you get degradation of insulation and sound, soundproofing over time. Engines get louder as they get older and run and everything else. That would be one that I'd be a little edgy on.
But they'd be subject to a, like a nuisance complaint.
Well, who wants to do that?
Yeah, but then you've got, as a nuisance complaint, then you've, you're putting the onus on the local.
Yeah, but either the DB is, is there or it's not. If you're a complaining witness in, in that type of a, an action.
Then you've got to be the one complaining. You know, if they're providing and showing that they're under the DB at a regular basis, like the, the bylaws say, they're all set.
Stop right there. So on their plan, right, with their single generator, their generator was around 41 dB at the lot line, which is 9 dB below the level. That's the engineer. Now, will that change? Now, that, that plan, what I'm saying is, they didn't add three other generators that really our bylaw said they should have.
Yeah.
Right, so I don't know, and I'm not a sound engineer. I don't know if that's gonna increase that, that decibel over 50 at the lot line with the other three? I don't really know.
I don't know if it's 100% cumulative.
I don't either. But again, I would have liked to have seen that done cumulatively so that we really would have known what we were looking at right now.
To that point, Chris, I, I think waiver on, waiver on B just, I'm, I'm leery giving a waiver on Part B there. A is no problem, the RF, is that? But waiver on Part B would be.
I, I also like to ask the question before we kind of agree on anything, but what do we do on the other towers in town? Have they been waived in the five-year special permit?
I'd have to.
Honestly, I, I have no idea. Not a way we'd find that information.
All right, so just, just to, just to keep everybody in focus, I, I don't, I don't want to get into discussion with the board. This is like a fact-finding thing for the board to ask questions of the petitioner, and we can have a little informal discussion. But I, I'd like to let the, the people who are here, you know, have a chance to speak when, when we're done with our inquiries.
All right, so those are the waiver issues. We just need to kind of figure out and finalize. Maybe have to get some more.
Oh, yeah, well.
I, I'd really like to know before I made a decision what the town's doing right now.
I don't even think, we're, we're not in discussion mode right now. We're just, we're just.
We're just, we're just.
I'm just trying to put my stuff on the table here, so you guys know where you're, where I'm going with a lot of this stuff.
You're very tuned in on this.
Um, also, on, on page twenty-eight in the application, there's also a thing in the bylaw that, you know, we can require a bond for them to remove the facility. Um, they, they, in one of their exhibits, I believe it's, um, eleven, they show thirty thousand dollars, you know, they had a, a second-party opinion saying, hey, thirty grand to remove it. Now, I'm a little, I'm a little off on their calculations because, um, when they, when they calculate the bond and, and that thirty thousand dollars, just removal of the tower and everything off of the pad, okay, but they're leaving the gravel road, they're leaving the concrete pad, personally, it's not my property. I really don't care, but our bylaw says you gotta put it back to the vegetation.
All right, if, if we allow this, you know, we can decide whether we, we hold it or not.
But that's something that we just wanna kind of figure out, okay?
Right.
Just, where they're a little different off of our bylaws, that's all.
No, I get it.
Um, um, also wanna talk about, you know, do we, on exhibit four, you know, we can, we have the right to do a, a third-party review. Bring in an engineer that, you know, an RF engineer that they'll pay for. Um, we might, I don't know if we wanna do that or not, if we have that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't know if we can make that, wanna make that decision right now. Maybe, maybe a half hour from now. I don't, I don't know. Do you have a continued meeting? I don't, we'll talk.
Yeah, just that, that the noise on the dB, need that full, all four, not, um, apron there, three nine by five. That's pretty much, um, most of my comments there, right now.
All right, I appreciate that, Chris, very detailed. Um, Paul?
Well, no, no comment about the fall zone, but I mean, obviously must, must fit within the, the hundred-foot buffer there.
Right, assume, yeah, you, you, you'd wanna make sure that that, that was clarified. And they do fall within that. All right, Jake?
The, I think the only question I have now is, I don't completely understand what it means to satisfy network requirements. So, and I think that goes to hardship.
Did you, did you wanna ask further questions right now?
Maybe Mr. Klas, Attorney Klasnick?
Attorney Klasnick, you still there?
Yep.
Yeah, we had a board member with a question for you, sir.
Can you hear me?
Absolutely, yes. I'm sorry, who, with whom am I speaking?
This, this is Jacob Morris.
Okay, thank you, Jacob.
Uh, I, I don't completely understand what it means to satisfy network requirements, and I think that that's the crux of your hardship argument. And I guess, are, are you saying that if AT&amp;T doesn't have a tower here, that the network may not work as well or doesn't work as well in other places where they do have the coverage? Or just in this area?
Well, I think what I, what I tried to do in the brief was to step through the traditional variance criteria, um, which I think there's a, an argument to be made, um, you know, for compliance, given the topographical requirements of, and the uniqueness of this location in relation to AT&amp;T's, uh, network requirements. Um, and I guess, in regards to the Telecommunications Act, as I said, if you look at the bylaw standards as it pertains to height, um, depending on how you interpret the bylaw, it either limits towers to thirty-five or forty-five feet. So, you know, really, this is a standard that is something that would not provide AT&amp;T with the necessary service that it's seeking. What we tried to explain in the RF report, and the RF engineer, you know, he is available if, if necessary, is that currently, and this is looking at, you know, the standards for prohibition of service under the Telecommunications Act really, and how that applies here. Currently, AT&amp;T has certified that it has a significant gap in both coverage and capacity on its 4G LTE in the area specified, uh, in the discussion that I had outlined along, you know, Main Street really and, and McBoy Avenue and that, and that whole proximity. So, what we have done by providing that RF report is to substantiate the fact that there is, what the courts have called a significant gap in service and, which really the FCC has, has clarified as far as what constitutes an effective prohibition, really looking at not only, uh, filling a coverage gap, but also, you know, just when they're, uh, when a carrier is densifying its network or introducing new services, or really otherwise improving service capabilities. So, as it relates to, you know, the specifics of the Telecommunications Act, that's the aspect, um, that overlays the local zoning requirements and really, uh, based upon, you know, the obligations that have been posed on boards uh, by the courts in interpreting the Telecommunications Act, and as has been stated in those decisions, you know, another reason to grant a variance is to avoid a prohibition of service. So, what I tried to do is outline, as I said, both of the state law requirements, how we satisfy that in regards to really the unique circumstances, the topography, and the unique circumstances of this lot as it relates to AT&amp;T's requirements. Um, the fact that if you look at the standards that are applied for dimensional variances, those really are, you know, quite relaxed by a large extent, uh, by Massachusetts courts. And really, the, looking at the compelling public interest that, uh, and the essential nature of, of wireless facility and what that affords as far as public safety benefit, um, also goes to, you know, the state requirements for, for granting a variance and really looking at, once again, this, I don't think derogates at all from, from your, from your bylaws and that it's allowed to use. And if you look at the height standards, it's not a height standard that any telecommunications facility would be able to satisfy. And really, there will, uh, you know, there won't be any sort of a detriment. Certainly, this is a benefit and that it will provide these, these critical telecommunications services, so. Um, I hope that's not too long, went another way of, of trying to, trying to explain that, and I can clarify further. But hopefully that was helpful.
Very helpful, thank you.
Okay, Jake, anything else?
No.
All right, Art?
Uh, yeah, it, uh, I just wanna follow up a little bit on what we were just talking about. Um, and I'll, I'm certainly not familiar with the FCC, the federal, uh, law you're talking about, but, uh, I'd like to know, do I have it right? That essentially you're saying that that would require the board to allow the variance, even if, for instance, we didn't agree the topography substantiated your, your hardship? Is that what you're really saying about that?
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, once again, I just, I'm sure that this board appreciates that really sort of overlaid on top of the, the state and the local zoning bylaws, you know, are the requirements of the Federal Telecommunications Act and, uh, and that the courts, you know, really have specifically found that closing a gap in coverage, uh, and, and adding capacity, um, to avoid that, what they call an effective prohibition of service, um, is another reason for, for granting a variance. And as I had made mention, you know, the FCC recently in its declaratory ruling tried to further clarify what constitutes a prohibition um, to not just filling coverage gaps, which, you know, we clearly have in this instance, uh, based upon there is no service essentially in, in 4G service in, in that particular area as at the levels, uh, specified in, in the coverage maps. Um, but really, looking at that, it just extends even to just, you know, if you're densifying your network or you're trying to introduce new services or, you know, improve service capabilities, all those factors go into whether or not uh, there were a, a decision to not allow a facility would constitute a prohibition of service.
Well, so, do you think that if this is not allowed, it would constitute a prohibition of services?
Um, yes, I mean, in my narrative, I cite to, well, you know, the number of case laws that everyone's familiar with in this regard. And in my view, we've shown the efforts, even though the FCC technically says we don't need to do this anymore, we've shown the efforts to find alternatives, there are no existing structures. Um, so, as I said, it took us, it took Blue Sky and AT&amp;T a number of years to get to this point, so there's been a lot of due diligence done. And, uh, we presented that to the board in our alternative site analysis. And we've also presented evidence of the gap in service and the fact that this facility will address that gap.
Right, so, the, the maps you've shown, you would say that that, the gaps are sufficient, they're, they're bad enough, if you will, to constitute a prohibition under the, the FCC Act?
Yeah, and as I said, um, that standard, because of the evolution in the industry and really becoming more, more, not in this instance necessarily, but more and more of a capacity issue as opposed to a coverage issue, what the FCC has said is that even if you're just what they call densifying the network, which is adding them facilities to deal with capacity, or you're trying to introduce new services, or you're just trying to improve the capabilities, um, all of those factors also can constitute a prohibition. But in, in this particular instance, what we have is a, a clear, clear gap in the service based upon the, on the levels that were specified in the studies that were conducted by, uh, by AT&amp;T's RF engineer.
Okay, so, the answer is yes, right?
Yeah, my view is yes.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so, those of you who would like to speak, I'll ask you to come up, form some kind of a informal orderly line. I'd ask that you, you state your name, your address, and limit your comments to two minutes, please. So, I'll, I'll, I, I'll let you form a line and decide who wants to speak. Thank you, I appreciate the cooperation.
My name is Karen Greenwood. I live on seven Breezy Lane. If anybody's familiar with Breezy Lane, it's the street that runs behind, um, the post office. From Breezy Lane goes over to Meadowbrook, down one street is Phillips. Now, in all these pitches that they took to show where this tower would be visible, they didn't even go in any of those locations. They weren't on Breezy, they weren't on Meadowbrook, they weren't on Phillips. Now, of the pitches, he said, I think there was thirty, thirty-five, and a lot of us got to view them prior to on, um, the town's website. There was twenty pitches that I picked out of those thirty that weren't even close to being aimed at where that tower's going. Now, anybody from Rutland knows when you're down on Main Street, beyond Pleasantale, they had a couple pe- pitches there at those new houses, Pleasantale, Kenwood, all facing up to the center of town. So, to me, just thinking, they weren't even aimed over where those towers were gonna be. They were down on Proudly Lane, down below the hill, Puma Gussit, Miles Road. The, it, and Rutland's such a high elevation, when you're on those streets, it's so far down below. And, you know, I think there was nineteen out of twenty pitches that weren't even aiming in that direction. You know, I mean, you can tell the ones where they showed the balloon and stuff. So, I was just making that statement, and when all the leaves are falling off the trees now, are they going back to take pictures of these locations that face where the tower's going? That means everybody's gonna see it. I mean, they're down on Kenwood, like, ten feet away from dense forest, you're not gonna see it. So, I just felt it was a little unfair the way they took those pitches that weren't showing truly. And when you're down at the school, they're showing the woods. Aren't those woods coming down to put the driveway in? Don't look at my computer.
Thank you for your comments, Dan.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm David Gold. I live at Four Phillips Road. And I'm in a butter within a hundred yards of the proposed site. Um, so, the zoning bylaws have been responsible for keeping the rural feeling of Rutland going for a long time. Uh, they say the pictures from a hundred years ago show the town center to be not really all that different in terms of the building structures and all. And at this point, we're being asked by a huge telecommunications corporation for variance to allow a cellphone pole a hundred forty feet tall to tower over the town center area. The tree canopy where the tower will be built is sixty-five feet, according to AT&amp;T's report. So, that means that over half of the industrial look and structure will rise out of the tree line and extend six, uh, seventy-five or so feet into the air. That's quite a variance. I'm certain that this single metal structure jutting out of the woods is gonna be an eyesore. I'm sorry, but there's no way it can be disguised. It's gonna stand alone, and it's not gonna fit into the surroundings. It's gonna harm the character of the center of town and of the nearby neighborhood in which I live. It's gonna turn it upside down, or upset it anyway. I'm part of this neighborhood within a hundred yards of the tower, and it's me and sixty other homes, businesses, churches, and Rutland's Elementary and Middle School who will absorb all the ramifications of the construction and concrete foundations, the clearing of land, and the raising of a huge tower. And we don't know all the ramifications of that. One thing I'm thinking is, I'm sure there's a lot of work in, in working around the wetlands, but that area is wet. Doesn't necessarily mean protected wetlands, but it's wet. And if you're gonna put a foundation down, isn't, is that gonna somehow change the flow of the water coming from Brooks, coming, you know, just the, it's just an unknown. And once the tower is up, well, that's it. Whatever happens, happens, so.
All right, well, I, thank you for your comments, sir. Very insightful comments, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Sarah Hill. I live on Clarity Road. Um, I am speaking for my three kids who go to Naqog. I have one at Glenwood, and I have a soon-to-be four-year-old, which will eventually go to Naqog and Central Tree and all that. I am very concerned that there is this incredibly large cellphone tower that's gonna be on this, basically, the school's property. You can easily go online and read medical journals that back that there is an immense amount of danger to having these near a school. Um, there are lawsuits, there was one out in California. Um, Sprint actually shut down a cellphone tower after multiple children at the school that they had the tower on developed cancer. I do not wanna see that happen to my children or anybody else's children. Um, I think that Rutland, Gardner, Barry, there are plenty of other places that you could possibly put this as opposed to an elementary school. A lot of these findings or studies that say that they are not harmful are backed by your big company like an AT&amp;T. You can go on and you can research that, that AT&amp;T will find that there is no harm from a cellphone tower. If there's no harm from a cellphone tower, then why is it listed as a possible human carcinogen? Um, I have a very dear friend of mine that I've been friends with since I was five years old, who was a nurse at UMass in the oncology department. She had a person come in that is with her right now that, she said she doesn't know a whole lot about cellphone towers medically, but she has had multiple patients who have had cancers caused from environmental stuff. She has a patient who was a janitor at a school who has the same cancer as five of his coworkers. So, there are definitely environmental issues that cause this, and I feel as a parent, it is my job to protect my children, and I think that there are many, many other places that you can possibly put it. Safe distances, from other things that I have researched, and again, these are all medical journals, these aren't just your hocus-pocus things online, is at a minimum one-third of a mile from any residential area.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a girl.
Thank you.
Now, I'm taking my kids out to dinner.
My name's Oscar Mott, I'm Thurston Hill. Oscar?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Um, I just found out about this last minute, and I was in Kentucky yesterday. I drove home last night and was running around doing stuff, but, anyway, I printed this stuff off quickly and, and headed up here. Um, I just wanted to bring to the attention of the board and the board here that there's been lawsuits. Um, anyone familiar with Robert Kennedy Junior? He has a advocacy group for children. It's called the Children's Health Defense dot org. And, um, uh, basically, they, um, they look out for, uh, kids, or everyone, basically, uh, medical stuff, like this 5G stuff. Um, but, anyway, so, they filed a lawsuit against the FCC, and they won this case. Um, so, and again, I'm sorry, I wasn't really prepared. Um, so, the US Court of Appeals, D.C. Circuit, August thirteenth, ruled in favor of the CDCHD. Um, and basically, the FCC has been ignoring studies for the last twenty-five years. Uh, studies that point to cancer being caused by these devices, these towers and whatnot. And, uh, they're gonna have to basically, now the CDC, uh, explain why they've ignored this evidence, uh, and basically have made rulings and, uh, these guidelines and stuff that they're referring to here without evidence. Um, so, if you guys go to that site, again, I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared, and don't have a lot of stuff to hand out.
It's okay, it's okay.
If you go to that site, there's links to the court cases, there's better explanations, but I just wanna make people aware of that. So, there's a lot of shenanigans going on. Uh, Kennedy refers to these regulatory agencies as captured agencies, which means they're captured by, uh, the people that they're supposed to be regu- which means they're captured by the people that they're supposed to be regulating. And, the FCC is not the only one. Right? You've got the FDA and many others, just turning a blind eye to stuff and putting us at risk.
Well, thank, thank you for your comments.
Sir, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name and address.
Oscar, O-S-C-A-R, last name is Motta, M-O-T-A, Thurston Hill.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Stewart, I live on Phillips Road, been living there for, well, fifteen years now. And, my question goes back to the first, to the basic premise of this whole, of this whole proposal, and that is the hardship and the need for, for service in that particular area. I'm an AT&T customer, I live on Phillips Road, which I believe if I, I was en route when the maps were being shown, but it looks like Phillips Road is in that dead zone, that, that area that is lacking. I have perfect cellphone reception all over my house on Phillips Road. So, where is the hardship, where is the need for service? That's my question.
Do you know if it's 4G?
My phone accommodates 5G, it, it does whatever is available.
Well, say it from the top of your phone, 3G, 4G.
Right now, it's 4G, I've got full bars here. And, I have no problem with cellphone reception in my home.
Do you, do you know, do you know if you're getting 3G at, at your house?
I, you know, to be honest, I've never looked.
Okay.
And, another concern is that, you know, we all love the rural feel of Rutland, the natural beauty that's here, when, you know, I have one view out my window from the second floor at the sunset, this tower's gonna be right in the middle of that. That may not mean a lot to other people who don't work there, it means an awful lot to me.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Hi, my name's Megan Gromon, I live on Pleasantale Road. I have a son at Naqog and a daughter at Central Tree. And, we're talking about how low the RF is, but this technology hasn't been around long enough for there to be any proof that this isn't going to harm us in the long run and for this to be built by a school, two schools, that these kids are at all day, every day. It's just, it's not smart, it's not safe, it should not be by schools.
Well, certainly the fact that it's near, near these schools, you know, we, we'll, we'll take note of that when we discuss this. Thank you, thank you.
Hi, Carolyn Streeter, eleven Maple Brook Circle. My property is immediately north of Twelve Phillips Road. There's so many angles to discuss on this. Quickly, on the health angle, I'll just say that the American Cancer Society has no stance on these cellphone towers as of yet. They state they have no stance, they feel that more research is warranted. That's good enough for me. The Cancer Society can't say it's safe, I wouldn't want my kids in those schools immediately abutting this tower. Regarding the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six, the FCC Act that you were asking about, so, it states that a zoning board cannot deny a variance if the communications corporation has determined a significant gap in coverage. So, we need to ask, what's a gap in coverage? What's a significant gap in coverage? Is it up to AT&T to determine that? And then, where? Where should, should, regardless, even if we, there was this indisputable significant gap in coverage, does that mean this tower should be smack in the center of town, abutting two schools and fifty to sixty neighbors? That AT&T map that showed the other site locations, none of those locations were smack in the center of town, for good reason. It's not where a hundred and forty-foot cell tower belongs, particularly in a rural town, right? This seems like one homeowner's idea, one massive corporation's idea. I hope we're just really kinda being polite here tonight, talking about it as if it has, is an idea with some sort of credit. It does, it's not a creditable idea to put this tower in the center of town for a lot of different reasons. This woodlot is a huge stormwater runoff storage area for the center of town. Look at a topographical map with the natural waterways portrayed on the map. Walk the land, just eyeball the land. It's obvious how this woodlot very much functions as a stormwater storage area for the function, for the center of town. All that water west of Route fifty-six is cast towards the, tor- directly towards this woodlot. All the water south of one twenty-two A is cast directly to this, the southerly point of this woodlot. Two streams feed it from the center of town. My property's right here, I've walked the center of town in rain events to see where the water goes. And, it all comes down, 'cause I was wondering, why is there so much rain in the roadways in my neighborhood? And, this was ten, I've been in my house for over twelve years, this was ten years ago, twelve years ago. But, I've seen it with my eyes, all this water ends up in this woodlot. So, there should be, we should be really, really hesitant about any development in the woodlot. My property, again, immediately adjacent to Twelve Phillips Road, I didn't have any groundwater with issues for nine or ten years in the house, not a sign of any groundwater issues. The past two and a half, three years, my backyard, which I haven't laser leveled it, but it's about on par elevation-wise with Twelve Phillips Road.
Right, you know, we, we might be getting a little off, off the path, you know.
No, it's not at all off the path. Municipalities are spending millions of dollars now to install green infrastructure in their developed areas surrounded by lots of impervious area. We have this, these woodlots, this naturally occurring, freely installed, precision-engineered woodlots in our developed area in the center of town. Why twenty years down, if we mess with these woodlots and the stormwater runoff capacity, what, twenty years down the road, we're gonna spend millions to bring green infrastructure back in? We have it there now, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
I have questions for the town, is this a, can I?
For, for, you have questions for who now?
I, I want, well, for the zoning board, this question is for sure for the zoning board.
All right, you've been speaking for a few minutes, but that's, that's, but that's, that's okay. How many questions do you have?
Um, I have three questions.
Sure, why don't you, to address to the board?
I believe so, yeah.
All right, why don't you go, why don't you go ahead?
You can tell me if they're going to the wrong place. On the bottom of the application for the variance, on the last page, is the property owner's name, which is the property owner at Twelve Phillips Road, and the town of Rutland.
Yes.
Right, two eighty-five Main Street. Does that mean the town of Rutland is applying to itself for a variance on its own bylaw?
No, no, I just wanna explain something to you. What, because they're tying into the right-of-way,
Yeah.
between the schools, that's not a public road, okay? So, that lot is part of this project, okay? So, try to just pull up the plan here to show you. It was a property line drawing here. There's like about five feet of the driveway leaves that Phillips Road property and enters onto the town of Rutland-owned property to connect up to that road. And, so, that's why, I'll show you, that's why they list both properties, because they're actually working on both of these properties. The town is okay with this, he's, they've run this by the town, you'll see that that's been signed off by the town. On the application, both this owner, there's letters in this application from both owners, the town and whoever owns that property, I forget their name, that have, that have allowed them to do, to file this application.
The town is okay with the application being filed?
Yes.
Being filed.
Being filed, blue, right, it's ready to application, let me show you.
But, you see how that implies that the town, so, property owner's name and town of Rutland on the application for variance seems to imply that the town is also applying for the variance.
The town has to allow, the property owner has to allow these people to file this application for special permit and the variance that they've applied for. Two things they're applying for, the special permit, all right?
Right.
And, you know, for us to review this tower, and then the variance for the height of the tower. Those are the two issues, okay? So, that's why there's two of butters lists in this application. That's, that's all, this is the stuff that's all online, man, you can, you know.
I've looked at it, and the whole, almost, that whole PowerPoint is on the town's website.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, yep. All right, what was your second question?
So, I think that's a little unclear, but it, it stands that.
The town isn't the petitioner, they're not petitioning anybody to do anything. They're just listed as a record owner of a piece of property that's involved with this petition that is AT&T or Blue Sky.
Okay. Next question, how does the, why would the town consider granting this variance? How does the town consider this might be a benefit to the town? Does it?
Okay, it's a bal- it's a bal- it's a balancing test between a generalized need for cell service, which, which is, it's a federal law, and, and detriment to the town. So, I think we can all agree that it's nice to be able to get good cell service in town, but if it's going to be outweighed by detriment to the town, then that's where we come in. So, we've, we're, we haven't made a decision.
No, I know.
We're just gathering facts.
I, I think everybody understands, you know, the lightning rod these things are, okay? We, I, I think modern-day society understands the needs for good cellphone coverage. During the ice storm here, I was here trying to get cellphones out, couldn't call anybody. In times of emergencies, everybody's on, okay? And, and this, and, and so, there's a need for it, I think we all understand the need today that, that cell towers bring, okay?
It doesn't have to be in the center of town, and I.
Ma'am, I'm just speaking, please, all right? We listen to you, let me just please say my opinion, okay, as a board member here. You asked a question, I'm just giving you my answer. You asked what the benefit was, I'm telling you, cellphone coverage is a benefit to some people in this town. Might not be to you and you and all of you here, but it is a benefit to some people in this town. Who they are, I don't know, maybe we'll hear from them, maybe we won't. But, I think you can understand, that can be a pos- that can be a positive thing for some people. Now, I understand, nobody wants to look at this in Rutland, I get that side of it too, so that's what we're here to decide.
Yeah, and again, it goes back to, what is a significant gap in coverage? And, where's, if it's determined that that exists, where is the cellphone tower gonna be? What's the process here, what happens after this?
All right, so, we, we will make a decision, and anyone who is unhappy with our decision can appeal to the Superior Court in Worcester, or the Land Court in Boston.
If we were to give them the variance, yeah.
Well.
Okay.
Or they could, that's right, they could appeal the decision.
Whoever is unhappy.
If we shoot them down, they can appeal it, and if we approve it, you know, somebody could, could appeal it as well.
I will just reiterate what Karen said, two of my neighbors besides Karen have full, have AT&T and full cellphone coverage in my neighborhood immediately abutting, both of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Rochelle, twenty-five Maple Avenue. I, I gotta, you just talked about it briefly, and one of my questions is the access to this, to this site coming from the town, from the town property. Now, you, you said somebody's already signed off on that? 'Cause, again, those, and they refer to it as a right-of-way there, but those, that roadway is not a right-of-way. That, those are the driveways to the school, and were part of the school plans. So, they're, they're like your driveway at your house. These driveways were put in to get to Naqog, the other driveway was put in to get to Central Tree. They're not public roads, and they're not right-of-ways. So, how do they get to tie into the right-of-way? By shortening their distance, why don't, why aren't they coming through the property from wherever they're leasing this plant from? I mean, you can't, you just, you can't go somewhere just tying to somebody's right-of-way unless you get a, a deed allowance from them to do that.
Tom, in their first, just reiterating what they said in their first presentation, it was ease of access so that they would not be coming through the neighborhood that was there, and it was like the least, they felt the least invasive access, that was their reasoning for going along.
Well, that could be their reasoning, but that may not be the public's reasoning that owns that property. So, so, would this have to go to a town meeting, to have the townspeople vote on access from that? I mean, it's the town's property. It's, it's, it belongs to the people, it doesn't belong to AT&T, it doesn't belong to that property owner.
Well, I did, just, just to point out to everybody, in Exhibit One of their application, you can find it, it's right online, okay? There are two letters of authorization, which the zoning board, our bylaws require. If, if, you know, someone, the telecommunications company's going to any one of your properties, you have to, they just can't come in and say, I wanna put a, put a piece of property on, on, you know, Tom's land, you know, you can't do that without Tom's approval. So, this is one letter from Gene Bigelow, and this is another letter, authorization from the town of Rutland, signed by the town manager, town administrator Ron San, San Angelo. So, that's, that's, I mean, it's right in their application. So, that's, that's why they've been allowed to come off of that property, Tom. Now, the legality that you just stated, I don't know, I, I, I don't know.
I know, but how does, how does the town manager, how was he allowed to authorize something on town property?
I think that's outside of our, uh.
Yeah, that's a good question, we can ask that question. I mean, it, it's a valid point, I'm just telling you, that's how they got to.
No, I understand what you're saying. What I'm saying is, I own a piece of that property going down to Sun Free School. I'm a town resident, I pay taxes. Nobody asks me about letting them use town, the town roadway.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm, I don't understand.
I understand.
There are certain things that, we, we vote these people in to make decisions, and we don't vote on everything they do, correct? Correct, you've been part of the government here. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just saying.
But, there are, but there are regulations and rules, and we have bylaws and there are state laws that you have to go by.
And, I don't know.
You just can't do whatever you want.
No, but there are some things they don't have to ask our opinion on, or get us to vote on.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm just, my, my point is that by, by them coming onto that roadway, or that driveway, I should say, it's, it's eliminated a huge expense from them trying to come in from the, the other property's location. So, so, it's, we're subsidizing part of what they're putting in as the taxpayers.
Tom, what I, what I'm thinking at this point is, is if that's an issue, you know, maybe put it on the warrant for the annual town meeting and hash it out that way.
I'm asking the question, I, I wanna know, that's why, I wanna know why they can do that.
I think, Tom, with that, that's outside the pervance of the board, that's not something.
I think you'd have to take it up with the town.
Yeah, that's outside what we do and how we'll be handling it.
But, you're gonna, you're gonna issue a, a variance or a permit for them to put this facility in, onto that piece of, onto that town property, you know?
Being a taxpayer, though, legally, I mean, it's sort of a simple answer to the question. Being a taxpayer doesn't give you any legal interest in public ways. Doesn't give you any ownership rights or rights to make decisions about public property.
It doesn't, huh?
No.
But, does being a taxpayer give you that right?
I just, I just said to you, is those, those are driveways to those properties. Because, as a matter of fact, the, the town is trying to do surveys on it to be, make that a public roadway.
So, as, well, I'm not gonna get into back and forth.
Well, I, well, you know how, I'm just, that's my statement for that. And, the other question I had, or the other state, you, there was a comment about the testing for the RF thing, and I understand what you're saying, and I don't disagree with you, maybe it's not worth it. But, what would be wrong with after this tower is in, whether, you're, you have a rule for ninety, is it, would you, I think you read it off, ninety days or something?
Correct, so, on the sound and the RF, it's a ninety day after the tower's been constructed, and then yearly after that.
Right, so, why would that, that ninety days at least do one test to make sure whatever was in their proposal is actually taking place?
It's a very good point, yep. We have many decisions on it, we've just discussed.
I understand, I'm just asking.
Especially if being so close to a school, exactly.
So, my name's Bruce Feeny, I live at thirty Maple Avenue. I, the view won't bother me, 'cause I look the other way, but the audio would bother me. I'm an audiovisual engineer at WPI. So, I think the variance was asking for forty dB level for, for one generator?
Um, so, let me just explain to you, the town bylaw is fifty decibels
Okay.
At, hang on, hang on, at the lot line.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
So, that's that perimeter of the, that, that, that twelve acres of Bigelow Road there, okay?
Okay.
Uh, Phillips Road, whatever it is.
Yeah.
Okay, Bigelow, so, that's what they can, that's what the bylaw is.
Yeah, fifty dB is pretty loud.
Yeah.
The one thing that you all weren't sure about was, if you had two generators going at the same time, it doesn't double, it's a logarithmic scale. So, if you had two, so, let's say they're both running at sixty dB at the location, two sixty dB generators is only gonna generate, it's like sixty-five. So, you add a third one, you're getting close to seventy. So, the only way you're ever gonna.
It's not linear, it's a, it's a.
It's not, right.
It's logarithmic.
It doesn't add, it's not additive, it's a logarithmic.
Yeah, but then they start to cancel out also.
Yeah, so, but I will say this, that you're gonna be kinda all in, all that's gonna be there, and when you go out there with a sensitive dB meter and start testing, now they're gonna, if it, if it is not fifty dB at the lot line, there's gonna be situations where there's gonna have to be mitigation. They add another one, there might have to be more mitigation. It is loud, and it's gonna be. Um, it is loud and it's going to be close to the school, so, and also the abutters.
The schools do have a generator themselves as well.
No, I understand.
You know, that's right next to the building.
I understand.
For emergency power. And those, they, they run once a week for testing, you know, for like about a half an hour.
Just putting it out there.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, we have somebody on Zoom with their hand up, hopefully they're still there. I think it's Jan Williams. Would, um, Tamika, what do we have to do to?
Um, she can just unmute herself.
Yeah, you want to, uh, Ms. Williams, would you like to be heard at this time?
Yes, I have a question, please. Um, Jan Williams at forty-three Maple Avenue, uh, right across the street probably from where it will be built. I'm curious at night about the lights. What, uh, provisions do you have that the FCC requires for light transmission at the top of the tower?
This is a non-lighted tower, ma'am, excuse me.
And what distance is it seen from?
Excuse me, this tower is not lighted. The aviation does not require the height of this tower to be lit. So there will be no red flashing lights like the one down on Campbell.
And that is exactly why I was asking. And I'm kind of curious, and I just have one follow-up question that does not relate to the lights at night. I'm glad to hear that, actually. Uh, is that I know that the FCC lists that we have twenty-five towers in town at the current time. Now, I realize that maybe they're not in the most opportune place for AT and T to add updated service, but it seems as though one of those towers may have been a possibility to retrofit and make it more advantageous to use for any carrier to update their service. So sitting in the center of a pop, the most densely populated area in the town of Rutland, in the center, it just doesn't make sense to put a tower of this size that's that visible when there are other options, as well as the town property at Rutland Heights. Now, I realize the property owner won't be leasing it from Rutland Heights and that the town will, but it seems more advantageous and I realize the issue of tree cover and other things, but certainly not all towers are surrounded by trees. And that's evident if you go out, uh, Campbell Street, you can look and see a tower that is not surrounded by trees. So I'm sure there are other options that might not be quite as desirable for AT and T, but, um, might actually be more desirable for the residents of this town. And those were the questions that I had. And did you explore all those other twenty-five locations? I know you said you explored eleven, but did you explore them all?
Do, do we, do we want to hear from Attorney Klasnick on this one?
Yeah.
Attorney Klasnick, could you, did, did you want to address those questions or that last question about why, why isn't it, why aren't they, why aren't you considering other towers in town?
Well, as I, uh, as I showed, uh, hopefully during our, my PowerPoint presentation, AT and T has already installed in a number of locations. I didn't have the exact addresses, um, for those. But the evaluation of the location, I mean, there's a limited search area. I think everyone appreciates these facilities actually operate on fairly low power. So they have to be in very close proximity to the targeted area. So the evaluation of locations did not identify any existing towers within AT and T's search cri, uh, criteria that were for attachment purposes. There aren't, to my knowledge, no towers within that search area. So as I had said, they're currently installed inside the church. They're, all the other candidates we looked at were raw land candidates. Cause once we determine, that's the first step. I mean, I'm sure everyone can appreciate the amount of time and expense that goes on, uh, goes through to, to develop these new tower communication powered locations. So if AT and T had a readily available location that was existing that would satisfy its coverage and capacity requirements, it would install on that rather than coming to the town, uh, with a proposal for a new tower. This is sort of the last resort, if you will, uh, when we're evaluating and developing sites.
All right, thank you, Attorney Klasnick.
May I follow it up with just one quick question for the attorney?
Briefly, ma'am.
Thank you, I appreciate your time. Uh, just one quick question, so attorney, are you telling us that the only area that this tur, this, when you say targeted marketing area, are you only referring that this, this one tower is only going to service the center of town?
Well, I don't know if you had it, um, through you, Mr. Chair. Um, I presented the coverage maps that were provided by AT and T's RF engineer.
Yes, I saw those and that's why I didn't understand your comment.
Well, I apologize. That graphically, uh, graphically represented the area that this particular facility will provide service at the specified levels in the RF report. So it's only along those areas of Main Street and Highway fifty-six and that surrounding area that this facility will, signal will propagate at the necessary power levels to provide, uh, the required four G service. I don't know if that's helpful.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, sir.
Doug Briggs, seventy-seven Maple Ave. Um, I got two, kind of two questions. Um, the first one is on the height of the tower. You stipulate that you're going to have AT and T and then three other carriers. Now, is the height of the, um, tower, is that is what you require in order for you to be up there with three other carriers?
Yeah, Attorney Klasnick, would, did you want to answer that, please?
Well, what AT and T has provided in its, uh, in its report, and once again, the RF engineer is, is available, but what, what the certification in that report states is that the height that they need to provide the service that their network requires is that hundred and thirty-six foot centerline height. So irrespective of those other three slots and the additional co-location, uh, possibilities, AT and T needs that, um, hundred and thirty-six foot height. And I mean, I, I would not be surprised if it were possible that they wouldn't want more height when you get into these type of situations where there is such a gap in service. Um, but the, the minimum height that they've certified in their RF report is that hundred and thirty-six foot central line height.
Okay, thank you. So that means that the, the other three carriers would either get less help or they wouldn't require as much help?
Well, I can't really comment on other, uh, wireless service providers' requirements. They're all designing their own networks, they're all using their own equipment, but there's generally a ten-foot separation between the antennas. So a second carrier would be a one-twenty-six and then so on and so on.
One sixteen, one oh six, right. Okay, so person one oh six would be.
Less advantageous.
Yeah. Uh, the other question I have or a comment I have is on the egress of the property. Um, Tommy brought it up and, and I know you, you made comments about, first of all, the, the, uh, Department of Public Works, uh, superintendent has the right to put curb cuts, all right? The problem is, is what he said is this is a private road, all right? It is not, it's a private driveway, it is not, it's not quote town owned. Because again, I was involved with the building of Plantwood, I was involved with the building of all the schools here. And what we had to do in order to get funding is we had to turn the control of the property over to the Wachusett Regional School District. So I guess what I'm saying is, instead of voting on things and trying to read it later, maybe you want to reach out to the district and say, do you also concur with the town that this curb cut is something that is viable? Just a thought, but I just hate to see you, you know, I'm, I'm, I didn't want to make a comment on your fifty-three and a half, but again, you should have reinserted that before you voted it, because I don't think you're going to get what you thought you got. So again, I just would like to see you look at that in terms of the spending, in terms of the, uh, using the funds. Fifty-three and a half is mostly for recreational. It's not for, you know, your type.
Well, we, we can.
But I, no, no, I'm, that's, that's totally separate. But all I'm saying on this case, just, as you're saying, it's not your issue and, and you made the comment that, well, if you don't like it, you can take it to the, to the courts. I mean, you know, that's.
I think we were just explaining the process.
I know, but I'm just.
No, no, hold on, let's be clear here, Doug, with all due respect. A person here asked what is the process after this meeting? And we told them the options that both the applicant and abutters and anybody in this town would have. We were not telling them like, you know, if you don't like it, you gotta go do that. That was not, that came off that way, I apologize. But we were just telling them, that's your legal option, because most people don't know what happens after we do vote on something down or, or, or for something. And we just want to make sure everybody understands that, that's all.
Right.
We're not, we're not trying to tell people, you know, where to go.
Okay, all right, Paul, Paul has a question and then there's an abut with her hand up, there's two. So what, what we're, we're going to hear from the board member and then, then we'll get to you two.
Okay, my question goes probably for the RF engineer now. Um, earlier the statement was made that the tower at the church is a three G AT and T tower. Yet people here are saying they're receiving four G, could you explain that?
Yeah, Martin?
Can you, uh, unmute and answer that?
Yeah, so the Martin Levin, uh, on behalf of AT and T, the installation at the church is, uh, three G only and it's at PCS frequencies, which are higher and don't propagate as well as, um, seven hundred megahertz. Uh, just because it was necessary to use smaller antennas to, um, fit everything inside the steeple. Um, they would not be receiving four G service from that site, which is in the steeple. They may be getting four G service from other surrounding sites. If you look at the, um, coverage map showing the current existing coverage, there is some coverage at or above meg ninety-three in the south end of town and in patches, uh, as predicted.
Well, excuse me.
Through the center of town there, um, so given the very limited reach of the steeple, three G installation is possible to get four G service, um,
Okay, well.
in certain spots.
If I may, right now, we're within a hundred feet or so, or a couple hundred feet of that, where we are. We're within a couple of hundred feet of that tower and they were saying they had full strength with four G service.
Yeah, there, there are areas in there where four G has some coverage, as you can see on the maps in the, in the center of town, um, just to the northwest of the proposed, northeast of the proposed site, there are areas that get some coverage out or above what we would call it in vehicle, um, coverage level. So it's, it's not an absolute black and white in or out type of, um, situation. There are some areas, patches of coverage here and there where four G probably does come through.
All right, so the, the cellphone technology will pick up the best coverage, is it the best signal?
Yeah, a four G phone will prefer four G if there's sufficient four G service from, um, and not, from a distant site, it will switch from the three G services coming from the steeple to the four G service coming from the dis, the distant site when, in the areas you can see there where it's available.
Okay, thank you very much, that clarifies it.
Okay, Kelly Balco, would you like to be heard?
Sure. Hi, my name is Kelly Balco, I live at five Clearview Road. Um, and I just want to speak as a concerned parent. I've got two little kids at Napwog Elementary, um, and who will later be going to the middle school as well. Um, so as other parents have already stated, um, you know, the jury's still out on whether or not the RF waves from these towers are harmful or not. And because of that, like, I don't see, uh, like, it just, it seems too dangerous to risk, um, you know, the kid's safety, um, and health in putting this up, so. Um, yeah, I just wanted to reiterate what the other parents have already stated, um, on just the safety of this, um, the fact that we don't really know a whole lot, um, on whether or not it can be damaging to their health or not.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate your comments. Um, Edward, would you like to be heard?
Yes, hi, uh, this is Robert Edward Liptak, I live on three nineteen Main Street. And I, I just want to say a few things. Want to agree with the woman who mentioned about the trees. Once they lose their leaves, uh, this thing will just stick out like a, a sore thumb. Also, um, I want to question whether the, uh, the people proposing this had other choices that were probably more expensive, but this was the, I'm sure it was an expensive choice. And did, uh, did they show that in their presentation, which I don't think they have?
Okay, thank you very much, so we'll.
I'm, I'm not to ask you other questions.
Oh, you're not done? Okay, well, I wrote, I wrote down that last comment. Go, go ahead, I, go ahead, go ahead, continue, please.
Uh, did they, did they consider other choices that would have been more expensive?
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a valid point and that's a valid question. Um, would you, uh, Attorney Klasnick, would you like to address that, please?
Yes, thank you, um, Mr. Chair. Well, a, as I outlined, uh, in, in my presentation and as all further described in the, uh, information that was provided as part of the application, I think it's helpful just to, to take a step back and, and look at how this process works. I mean, fundamentally, it starts with an RF engineer identifying a need for a facility because of coverage or capacity requirements. And then, uh, a specific area, a search area is designated. And then the, typically a site acquisition firm is hired. And as I said, uh, they would evaluate first whether there were any existing structures that would be suitable for attachment purposes. And only after it was determined that there were no existing structures would raw land candidates be considered. So, so initially, that's the process. So what really drives the decision is first and foremost, whether or not a particular location will satisfy the network requirements, address the, the gap in service. Uh, secondly, also whether or not, uh, it's constructible, whether there are constructability factors that would present, prevent it from, from being a suitable candidate. And then also whether or not the site is leaseable. So all three of those requirements need to coalesce. So what we have represented in our alternative site analysis is that we looked at a number of raw land candidates. But because those were all determined, uh, by, by AT and T to be not suitable or not provide the service at the same levels as the proposed location at twelve Phillips Road, we didn't necessarily need to, to further evaluate the other aspects of those. But we did include in our alternative site analysis, uh, various factors that impact each one of those properties that made them difficult as far as, as being something that would be able to be developed to accommodate a telecommunications tower. So, so those are the three criteria that are considered. It was really, like I said, uh, quite a four or five year process to get to this particular point. And it wasn't driven necessarily by there were other candidates that would be more expensive to develop.
So I guess my question is, how come that's not in your patch to say, uh, we, we considered these other places, but they were too expensive? Cause I'm sure if there was a development in that, uh, twelve acre lot, you'd be choosing the second choice. And to be fair, it would be, you know, only in excess to show the townspeople that, uh, you, you do have an alternative and, you know.
Yeah, sir, I'm going to have to cut you off here because, because you, I don't want, I can't have a back and forth with you and the petitioner.
Okay, I, I just want another quick question.
I mean, I, I, look, other people have said the same thing and we, we've heard at length on multiple occasions from Attorney Klasnick about the process. So I, I'm just trying to move, move this hearing along.
I just have another quick question and a comment.
Sure.
If you go to FCC has maps for, uh, coverage in the whole United States. Plug in Rutland and you look and it shows that there is full coverage, four G LTE coverage. Uh, this is as of May twenty twenty-one. Uh, I sent the link on, on the chat, people can look at it. I just want to know, uh, from the, uh, people applying here, uh, why is that?
Well, that, that's, all right, that's a question.
Yeah. Attorney answered.
All right.
Okay, and the other, other comment I'll just make is that the Senate Board should not be intimidated by this hardship thing in court. Uh, you should work with your attorneys to make the best choice for the town.
All right, so we, we've got, we've got a lot of experience, um, making decisions and we're not intimidated by anybody. Did you have, do you have anything further?
And, and the, the last thing about the driveways, that's a, a planning board thing. They've not got a special permit to, uh, use, uh, uh, sheer driveways. Uh, and no other town can, you know, flip board or anybody can go over that.
That's an interesting issue and we are going to look at that issue. Thank you, though.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank everyone for attending.
All right, uh, another, yeah.
Excuse me, do you want to have that gentleman answer that question about, about the coverage map?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, okay. Attorney Klasnick, did you, could you backtrack back to that question, please?
Yes, I, I mean, I think the best way that I can answer that, and once again, the RF engineer is here, but what AT and T has provided is a specific report based upon this particular location. I don't know what map, uh, the gentleman was referring to. But what we've provided to the board is the only actual data showing the coverage that AT and T currently has at four G LTE coverage that we're discussing and the service that will res. and the service that will result from the installation of this facility, so. That report is, as I said, specifically prepared using specific necessary computer tools to evaluate and make that determination, so. We represent that that's an accurate representation of both existing LTE coverage based upon the power levels that are specified in the report and the coverage that will result.
Thank you very much. Alright, so this is gonna be the last comment for this evening. We may, we're probably more than likely going to continue this. But this is gonna be the last public comment for tonight, sir.
Mike Sullivan, Crawford Road. I've got a couple of points. First of all, could I ask through the chair to ask Tamika if she could tell me the two a-butter's list dates? There's two a-butter's lists and they, and they, they are different dates. Number one, and number two, when was the balloon test done? And then I'll make some comments, and if you can do that, fine. If you can't, it's okay.
Tamika, if you, if you have that in front of you.
The date that you see in the information that Attorney Klosnik provided, that was when he obtained the a-butter's list to send it out specific to the balloon testing. I personally.
What was that date of the balloon test?
It was August, I went to August seventeenth and the twenty-first, I believe.
Okay, and what was the date of the second a-butter's list? I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
I specifically requested the a-butter's list for this meeting myself from the assessor's office. It was about three weeks ago.
September ninth and July twenty, July nineteenth are the dates in the application to me.
That's when Dan got them for his purposes, but I specifically requested them myself from the assessor's office. I can check back in my email, but it would have been like three weeks ago.
The the balloon test was done after, not before, the second a-butter's list was. If I can make one comment with that, the balloon test only was part of the one parcel, the the big and little parcel. Because certain people in here are on one parcel, okay, the balloon test only is affected with that one parcel off of Phillips Road, okay? Other people's property might be three hundred feet from the the big acreage of the two schools, which is the Rutland parcel. So that's why there are two a-butter's lists, because you have two separate parcels. And not everybody is on the Phillips Road parcel. And some of those people on the Phillips Road parcel wouldn't be, might not be on the other parcel, so that's why, because both lots are affected with this. There are two separate a-butter's lists, but keep in mind, the balloon test was only associated with the Phillips at that time. Because it's only part of that one lot where the tower was going.
If I may, they were not required to send a butter's notices for that one. The board actually requested that they did, just so that folks knew about it, but that that was not required.
Okay, just just quickly, I I won't get into some of the things because they've already been spoken to, but just a point of information, and I work with Tamika in a different town capacity. She does a bang-up job, but I can tell you that as a direct a-butter, we got no notification of any of these public hearings. And not only did I not, or did we not, I know of two other family members who did not, who can't be here, and I brought this to your attention. Yes, the only reason I knew this was even happening was saw the sign in the, at the end of the school property. So I, I mean, it is what it is.
I brought it up to Tamika, and she assured me that.
Oh, trust me. I know Tamika, I know how conscientious she is. I'm going on record, there's no one better. I'm just telling you. I get the mail, and I know the other person that I asked. I'm the owner that opens the mail in my house, and the other person is the same way. Definitely did not get it.
Okay, what I would suggest is that you just confirm that you're on the list.
Oh, I'm on the list. I looked at the list.
Okay, so unfortunately, the way it works with legal and through town mail, all they have to do is.
Yeah, no, I understand. I understand all that.
We can't.
I'm here, so it's not a hot burn to me.
And we apologize for you not getting it. The town did its due diligence. It cannot, it cannot affect what the post office does or does not deliver.
I understand.
Which is unfortunate, but.
I'm here, so it's not a hot burn for me, but there are others who may not be here. I just want to.
No, it's a valid point, and if it wasn't done, it, you know, that's something that needs to be looked at.
I want to go back to the pictures that we're taking. I, as some of you know, have some interest in the HBDD site, the hospital property. I saw no pictures from the top of the hospital hill looking back down at that, and to me, that is, that has to be one of the locations that if anywhere it's gonna be seen from, it could certainly be there. And as you know, there are, there is, you know, pending opportunity being worked on there that I, you know, I just want to make sure that we're considering all options there. And I shared the concerns that were raised by others about. Excuse me, there was one picture in front of Central Tree School, though. Did you see that one? Did it show the tower? Doesn't show from the top of the hospital. No, it doesn't, but it does show that it's it's a more direct angle to the tower, to be honest with you. Than than being tight to the tree line. But just, I just want to make sure you saw that. But the hospital property has to be fifty feet higher than that?
I would say we'd probably see it from up there without a doubt.
Yeah, well, it just seems awful.
It's not gonna be residential up there, so.
Oh, yes, it is. Absolutely.
Heights, it's not gonna be residential, that's for. Set for elderly housing.
It's gonna be residential housing. It's gonna be senior housing. Is that residential?
Senior housing does not fall into the, of individual single-family home, but yes, it would be.
Okay. Now I lost my train of thought after that.
Kids. School.
Sorry.
That's, that's fine. Okay, so I I did indicate that Mr. Sullivan was gonna be the last person. Do you have a brief follow-up, ma'am?
There was an earlier plan.
Do you want to, do you want to step up if you might, wouldn't mind?
I just thought, no, let her, let her go, but I thought of what it was.
Okay, great.
Hang on, hang on. Come and go to.
There was an earlier plan that called for the twelve-foot wide gravel road to the tower to come in off of Phillips Road. Has anyone else seen that plan? I have it in my email.
Yeah, so, so when they did their preliminary hearing, we had a meeting back in March, April, something like that. I think it was March eighth. Or that's the date of that drawing, I believe. It's on the town website. When you look, when you go under the application, it's the preliminary plans, and they, and that preliminary plan, ma'am, yes, it does show the access road coming off of the end of Phillips Road up through the site to that, to the tower. We discussed at that preliminary hearing, you know, because in the bylaws, they get a preliminary meeting, they come in, talk to you, you know, you go over the project with them, and they asked, you know, would it be, you know, what do you guys think about coming off of that right away? And honestly, I believe, I have to check the minutes, but we had no real preference regarding it. It was up to the town, if the town allowed it, to be perfectly honest with you. And then they went and got the town's signature and submitted these drawings with that access off of that town right away.
Two quick things about that. So that photo from Central Tree Middle School appears to have been taken into consideration that first plan with the access coming off Phillips Road and not the curb cut on the school driveway.
No, it was a balloon test. That picture's a balloon test, so it doesn't matter where the curb cut comes from. That was where the tower was going. The tower location, it doesn't, didn't.
My point is that I think the tower might be much more visible from Central Tree Middle School with the access being off the school driveway and not the easterly side off of Phillips Road. And then my second quick point about that, about what Tom said, you know, if this curb cut, they might bounce back to that earlier plan to come off Phillips Road with the longer access into the tower if this curb cut issue comes, you know.
Could happen, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Sullivan.
Just, just a quick recall note. In regards to the access from from Phillips Road or Forest Hill, whatever the name of Phillips Road, I guess it is, versus the school, if I could ask the town engineer, excuse me, the applicant's engineer, what's the difference in distance of those two roadways from the original submission and the, and the submission from the school? I mean, just kind of looking at the map, it looks to me like the, from the school, it's like a hundred and fifty feet, and from. About sixty to eighty feet off that. Let's call it a hundred feet. And the other way's considerably long. That's what I want to know. How far is the other way? It's gotta be twelve hundred feet. I don't have that drawing yet. Yeah, 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 we can.
Alright, can we ask the engineer if he could possibly address that?
Just approximately.
Sure, yes, I, Tom, that's a good one, there again.
Yeah, there you go. That's it. Yeah, here's the plan right here.
The currently proposed drive is about a hundred and seventy feet off of the school property.
Okay, and the other road, driveway, whatever you want to call it? Thousand? Twelve hundred? Probably nine.
No, it's, it's probably about six hundred feet. There's a dimension on that, the raw aerial photo that shows the hundred fifteen to the corner of the property. It's about two hundred feet in. It's all the existing drivers. I'd say about six hundred feet.
Okay, I I guess it's pretty obvious why the applicant would choose to go off of the town-owned driveway rather than spend the money to build.
If I might, if I might further comment here, on that aerial photo, you can see where the wetland resource areas are on the property, and you can also see where the upland area is on the property. And by accessing from the school property, we avoid those wetland resource areas and we avoid the potential of the wetland resources.
Which as a result is a much more cost-effective solution to the applicant. I mean unquestionably. I guess I would just ask the board to consider that the the cost savings that is being passed on to the applicant by allowing them to access from what is a driveway, and it's a very deficient driveway as it is, and now you're talking about construction vehicles and all of that happening on that roadway. I think that's a big deal and should be considered.
Alright, that's a good point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so I'm not, we're not closing off public comment, but at this point, I'd like to have a quick discussion with the board. I think we need to continue this. The question in my mind is, what do we need to look at between now and the continued meeting, assuming that, assuming that we continue this? I, I, I think I'd like to study this personally and digest everything that everybody has said. Consider everything that's been presented and and come back with, you know, maybe some some clarity in my own mind as far as this project. Any thoughts from the, from the other board members? On what, where we need to go from here?
I would, well, I guess you should see what some of you guys think, but this this issue with coming in through the school road and, you know, there's this letter, right, from the town manager, but I think we might want to get some more clarification on that, and is that actually gonna stand? Because even if.
I mean, I agree. I think it's a good.
Even if we end up with some sort of favorable vote, and it happens to involve that, you know, that's, we want to make sure that there's not some backdoor problem with doing that before any, any vote happens on this. I mean, that's just one thing, but I think that's a big thing.
I, I, I think they're right.
That's one of my items. I'm all in on that one.
Given the concerns of some of the residents on the balloon test and where photos were taken, I'd almost like to see a second balloon test happen.
No leaves.
Yeah, no leaves.
A winter balloon test?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, right around this time of year, the next month or so with, you know, from some specific locations that were brought up with specific angles. It doesn't have to be a two-day one or anything like that, but just.
Doing it on Saturdays so we can all see it.
They did the original one that way, too. It was over a four-day.
Summer vacations.
Which is what they do.
Look, I, I appreciate, you know, you wanting to participate, but but it'll just be a free-for-all if people start stalking, so. So we're, we're gonna get, this is not gonna be the end.
Good.
Alright.
Well, do you want to have any more discussion just on the board about specific other things to run down, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I got, you know, I mean, number one, how do you prove they need this? This is some of my items right here, just some discussion points. You know, how do we prove, how do they prove what we believe and prove, however we want to say it, that they truly need this, right? That's up for discussion. The right-of-way access you mentioned already. I guess some little things like clarifying the scale I'll do. Do we want a balloon test? I, I, you know, I don't think it's a bad idea. I mean, there's some concerns here. Obviously, you know, they did it in in August when times are good for them, but now November, times are, times, this is the other side of it. You know, it just shows both sides. I think it's a valid thing to discuss.
I bet you, you could have simulated drawings without.
Yep, yeah, exactly. I'd like to see the sound engineering for all four pieces of equipment with generators, you know, I'd like to see that done. You know, just the sound, just want to see what that is.
Computer simulation?
Well, they do that. They do that, yeah. He did it already. He just did it with one piece of equipment and one generator. So our bylaw states that they're supposed to do that to the, to the fully maxed out, so I, I, personally, I'd like to see that.
Or is that something you want to?
I think that's, that's, yeah, I mean, that's, I think that's something that they could get working on right away. It probably wouldn't be a big deal for them to do. Again, we've got those waiver issues, you know, and the three waivers they requested. The greater the road I'm up on, but that's just kind of me. And then, you know, RF health issues. What do we want to discuss with that as a board? I mean, this comes up every time with the cell tower. There's always people that have concerns with that. I mean, I, I know, you know, there's two sides, but I hear what they say. I mean, every kid knows schools that cell phones to their faces all day long, you know, I mean.
Alright, well, I want, I want to look at the the telecommunications act and just look at that myself.
Can we task the petitioner with regard to that access road issue, or is that something we're looking at, too?
That's really, I think it should come from our side.
Right, that's my thought, too.
I think we should.
The property value in the area, what about the housing?
Alright, look, look, I can't have people just shouting out.
Oh, okay.
So we'll, when we come back, when we, we're gonna set a, we're gonna continue this meeting, and then you can come back and we'll have more public discussion. We're trying to hone in on the issues a little bit right now. Okay, so Attorney Klosnik, what are your thoughts on having a winter balloon test without the leaves, with the idea of what, in a month, maybe a month and a, a month from now, two months from now? What are your thoughts on feasibility of you doing that?
Yes, certainly, if, if, as you know, we did specifically work with the town on scheduling the initial balloon test. And certainly would work with the town to undertake a second balloon test with with leave-off conditions.
Alright, so I, I think, I think there's a consensus among the boards that we'd like you to do that.
Okay, yes, I would, I would work on on scheduling that with with Tamika, if that's acceptable.
Yes, please.
Concern was brought up earlier about the federal map saying, you know, it shows full coverage. So you can make a comment on this. I had some experience with this recently on some different piece of property I'm involved with in New Hampshire, and those federal maps are all wrong. The state of New Hampshire is actually suing several of the cellphone companies over the whole mapping thing, so, because they, they show coverage and there isn't coverage, and they receive funds for coverage that isn't there, so the federal maps really are not accurate at all as far as coverage. They're not a good resource. So just to, as a response to whoever brought that up earlier, unfortunately.
I would like to maybe just bring up, I mean, do we need to bring in a third-party RF guy just to kind of review all of their calculations, AT&amp;T's engineering, on why they need this tower? Do we need to have somebody to double-check that?
I'm not, well, is this something that you could, could you do like a, an informal feasibility investigation? And just see how much it was a cost?
Oh, yeah, I don't know. I don't know who the heck could get, to be honest with you. Well, first of all, in our bylaws, they pay for it.
Yes.
So the applicant pays for it.
That's true.
And usually, there's always a, we both agree on a particular person or entity to do, to be that, and that's always, we, we've done it. It's always done on other boards, you know, playing or whatever. If you have a third-party peer review on an engineering type, you know, civil engineering drawing or something like that, you bring in a peer review.
If there wasn't a gap in coverage, though, why would they, why would they be going through all this? What would be the?
I don't see the reason, I mean financially, to put the cost of this tower in. Unless they could jump on another tower, to me, it was like, that's a no-brainer. They'd just jump on that, you know? But I'm just asking the question to this board, do you guys feel like there's enough, there's enough, you know, need for that to warrant that?
I don't believe so.
I'm not sure. You don't, you don't think so? Bob, what do you think?
I wouldn't mind seeing it, just to confirm.
Jake?
I tend to believe that they say there's a gap in coverage, there's a gap in coverage. I don't know why they'd be here if there wasn't.
I mean, and this stuff is still line of sight, and I mean, I don't have AT&amp;T, I got a different carrier, but I know I, you get over certain, you know, go down by Long Pond.
you get over certain si- uh, you know, go down by, um, Long Pond or whatever, and you're in and out, zipping, dying over there.
Yeah, I, I, well, I mean, it, it's a very technical question to your point.
Yeah.
You know, when I look at the comparative, you know, the, the two maps showing coverage now, coverage after, doesn't look like it's all, I mean, what's so great about that? I mean, to put it blunt.
There's not a big difference, right?
There's not a big difference.
No.
So how does that go from, you know, that lower level of coverage represents a complete prohibition of service under the FCC Act to a little bit more, you know, meets that? I mean, now, you know, I, I, I'm sure that there's a gap. And, you know, I agree with what Jake just said, which is, why would they go to all this trouble if it wasn't something that need, in their view, needed to be fixed, I, you know, so I think there's a gap. But I think there maybe is a legal question about, you know, does that gap really invoke this, you know, what I consider to be, I mean, I heard Attorney Klasnick basically say that, you know, if that's, uh, if that gap is enough to constitute a prohibition of service, it really doesn't matter too much what we do. They, they can appeal and say you were wrong under the FCC. But that turns on a factual question. Is this gap sufficient enough to meet that standard? I have no idea.
And that's why the third-party, I think, really gives us some validity before we go down this road. I mean, there are people, townspeople that have some concerns. Um, to me, you know, to, to the same point that he said, you know, like, to spend all this money for a tower, but when you look at the coverage difference, like, that, like, there's like fifty people there. Like, it doesn't even make sense, how many of those AT&amp;T people?
But, but I, my guess is getting a third party is prohibitive, fucking, you know, money-wise. I mean, I still think the larger questions are things about what the real view situation's gonna be. Leaves down, proper sites covered by the photos. Those are things we can know the answer to.
Yeah.
Another balloon test, I think, is probably a must.
They seem like he's on board with it.
The stuff about the school, I mean, that's, that's one of these arguments today, you're never gonna get to the bottom of that. But I still think it's a concern, and I'd like to, I mean, I didn't wanna interrupt, but, uh, maybe when we come back, Attorney Klasnick or somebody else would at least speak to that issue, um, at least from their side as to why, you know, the Robert Kennedy Foundation is maybe wrong, or, or give, you know, put a little more context to that question. Because us as a board, I don't think we're gonna sort that out.
Okay, okay, so, is it, could we put this off to the next hearing, or is this something that you need to?
Quick question.
Go ahead.
Isn't it a conflict of interest to hire a third-party that the petitioner is going to approve or not approve?
Both parties agree on that, ma'am. So it's like going to mediation, if you have a contract dispute, before you go to court, oftentimes you go to mediation, and you both agree on that person that's gonna mediate the case for both parties.
Why do we have to mediate with AT&amp;T?
I'm just using that as an example, ma'am, okay?
But they're petitioning for a whole bunch of stuff.
Let me just explain.
They shouldn't have a say in who we choose as a third party.
Well, it's a matter of being respectful, that's all.
I, I think if it comes right down to it, we don't, we don't have to have agreement with them.
That we choose, if we're happy with somebody.
We don't have to be respectful to AT&amp;T, they have to prove their point.
It's common practice, okay? That when you're at a board hearing like this, that when, when, when there's a third-party peer review for somebody's application, they have the right to be here, okay, whether you like them or not, they have the right to be here. And just like when you have the right of a jury of your peers, your attorney and, and the other attorneys both get to pick those people. They both have a say in that matter. And that's, that's why that's a common practice, that we both have a say in who that person is, that's all. So that's the way, whatever.
All right, so, all right, so we're, look, look, we're, we're, I'm conducting a fair hearing here, right? You've gotta let us go through our process, and we, and we, we've listened to a lot of people talking and sharing, and I know, and, and so, we're, you can come back the next time, but we're not, we're not gonna, we're not gonna hear any more comments or questions.
This is, in, can I just say one thing for the next meeting?
Sure.
Can we look at the lawsuits that, uh, happened on the cell towers near the schools that led to the towers being taken down?
You're, you're free, you're free to do any independent research you'd like.
Could, could I present that here? What, what the findings were during the discovery of the trials?
You could, you have the right to submit anything to us.
Okay, all right.
And, and we'll give it the perp or do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, all right, so how, how are we gonna go about finding a third-party RF engineer? I have some ideas. I, I, I have some personal access to, to an RF engineer. Um, you know, not that that means anything, but at least I, I would know how to get started. And I als- also, we have, we have engineers that we've used in the past, we have engineers that are available. So I, I think we could find one, does, does that make sense, Chris?
Yeah.
Now.
If they have anybody that, if they wanna recommend that we can.
Do you, do you want me to take the lead on it, or do you want to?
Um, I think we both should, I mean, if you wanna find people, and I'll find people, I think the more the merrier.
Okay, sure.
If you, if you're okay with that.
No, I am, I, you know. Yeah, I think the best thing to do is you guys come up with a name, present the name to the.
The bankers and attorneys that I deal with, they, you know, they do a lot of property deals.
We can present the name to, uh, out of respect to Attorney, um, Klaas Criv.
He's gone?
Well, he's there.
Okay, he should come up with something, that's my opinion.
Well, here's my thought.
If you don't want, if you just want us to determine it first.
My thought, that if you guys come up with one, and we present the name to them, and they're okay with it, it's easier and done.
Sure.
You know?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that would be a quick, easy way, if, if they're okay with that. You know, if they're not, then they have somebody that they prefer that we use, uh, that we'd have to, uh, entertain that also, so.
Good idea.
Okay, so on, on the driveway issue, um, does, does, do one of you wanna take the lead on looking at that? Or do, would you like me to do it?
Me and Jake can do it, you wanna, we can.
Sure.
Isn't that just really a simple call to, uh, town manager?
Still takes, still takes two of us.
Right.
All right.
Just a added piece of information, um, this actually came before the select ward, and the select ward voted on it. So they were the predecessor to Ron providing that information.
I just think we need to get some more background.
Sure, yeah, so I just wanted you to know that they were involved, it wasn't just Ron.
All right, okay, then that's, I mean, uh, they approved it, I think, that at this point.
All right, well, I just wanna, I think we should get a little bit more.
You're, you're gonna take the lead on that, okay, looking at that, okay. All right, is there anything else we, we need to discuss, um, for this hearing for tonight? I don't think so.
I don't think so.
All right, let me just write this down, so I don't forget. Okay, so we will continue this hearing, let's pick a date.
So I have Peter shared the calendar with me, um, just for room availability. Um, so we would be looking at December, and it would be the eighth, fifteenth, and twenty-second are all available.
All right, what do you, what do you, what does the board think? Twenty-second is no good for me. That's a little close to the holiday. So probably the eighth or the fifteenth, right? Do you wanna, does it make sense to do the fifteenth, or is, just wanna do, get it over within the early part of the month?
I would say the eighth, just.
All right, I, I'm gonna agree.
What day is the eighth, is that?
Those are all Wednesdays.
What about Wednesdays?
Yep.
Um, Attorney Chris, I'm sorry. I apologize, it's Klasnick, thank you. Are they okay with that date? Yeah, Attorney Klasnick, we're think, we're, we're thinking about, uh, continuing this to December eighth, how does that work for you?
I, I guess I would just clarify the purpose. Now, we had discussed that the board had requested a further balloon test?
Yes, in the winter.
Is that something that would happen after the December meeting?
I, I think definitely so.
How quick can you do it? I mean, the leaves are just about all down. Some of the oaks, the oaks don't, you know, the oaks really never get rid of them until like February, until the blue leaves come in.
I'm sorry, so the December eighth meeting would be just to take up the other issues as far as the RF consultant and other matters?
Yeah, I just didn't know if it was reasonable to ask you to get a, get a balloon test done by the eighth. I didn't think that was.
Yeah, I, I don't act, I don't know specifically, uh, you know, it's dependent upon weather conditions, but, um.
I was, if you could get one done.
For us to, to reconvene on December eighth, you know, I think we would like to try.
You know, the other thing we, the other thing we could do is figure out when, how much time he needs for the balloon test, and then schedule the hearing for after that. So we'll probably go into January.
Well, I, I think perhaps if I may suggest, uh, Mr. Chairman, you know, you can continue it to that December eighth date certain. And if for whatever reason, we, you don't feel that we, you, we've provided you with all the information you need on December eighth, then we could further continue it from that point without actually conducting the hearing, if that works for the board.
I think that's actually very reasonable.
I do too, cause we could solve some of these other things too. Let's keep this thing moving, there's a lot to go on here, let's just keep knocking things down one at a time.
Uh, the rest of the board?
December eighth?
All right, we're agreeable, we're agreeable to that, December, December eighth at six o'clock.
That's a Wednesday again?
It is a Wednesday.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, do we, is there, all right, so this particular part of the hearing is closed. This is a public hearing, you're all wel- welcome to stay, we may stay to talk about a couple other issues. If you're gonna have private conversations, we ask you to kindly have them outside the room. Thank you for coming.
Just to confirm, Mr. Chairman, the board voted to continue till December eighth?
Uh, yeah, I make a motion, we continue to September, uh, December eighth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, we take a number, thank you. Yep.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time this evening, everyone have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
You too, thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
You too, thank you for coming, we do appreciate it.
All right, is there any other?
It's good to hear.
I was gonna ask Tamika, is there any other business?
Don't worry.
That's fine, that's fine.
Sure, government.
Um, dude, I was just gonna ask, do we have any other business we have to attend to?
No, I think we got to it at the beginning, so it should be good.
All right, all right, motion? Motion to close the meeting.
Second is?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, all right, thank you.